All right, so we'll call the meeting to order, Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals. September eighth, two thousand twenty-one. We'll start with a roll call agenda of members. Chip Tarbell.
Yeah.
Jim McBane.
Yeah.
Amy Wall.
Yeah.
Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
Tom Feely. I mean.
I'm here under Tom Lucy, though.
He's here.
Mike Feely.
Yes.
Thank you. All in attendance. Thank you. All right, Amy, if you would please read the legal notice.
I think, consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number, one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. Meeting ID eight one one seven eight nine three three five seven one, passcode two nine zero five zero zero. Please only use dial-in or a computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. One continued hearings to twenty-two dash eight BCA Wakefield Animal Hospital. Application for variance under section one ninety seventy-seven E of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow signage, the property is shown as map. Thirty-six W lot parcel zero zero five dash zero nine A of the assessors map and is located at sixty Audubon Road. Three twenty-nine twenty-two dash nine ID Sign Group Inc. for Shaw's supermarket. Application for variance under Article thirteen, section one ninety dash seventy-seven B two A of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. To allow signage, the property is shown as map seventeen lot parcel zero zero eight dash one nine two of the assessors map and is located at one thirty-four Water Street. Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
All right, as often the case, we do have a few administrative matters we can take up front, some memos about a few hearings on our agenda this evening. So we'll take those up first in case anyone was here specifically for them. From attorney Brian McGrail dated September eighth regarding Elite Metal Framing and Construction, Inc. at six eleven Salem Street. Wakefield case number twenty-one dash thirty-eight, requesting that we continue the matter till our meeting in November. Which we set that just for the record. That is the tenth, correct, Gail?
No, the seventeenth.
Oh, and I didn't update my calendar. Okay.
What day was it? The eleventh? Nope, the seventeenth.
Seventeen. It was off by one Wednesday. Okay.
Oh, I'm in the wrong month. Okay.
Yeah, for November. So just for the record, so requesting to continue to November seventeenth. We've now had a number of detailed meetings and conversations with the building inspector and town council, and we have agreed that we will be submitting new applications with the board in the near future, which if approved would entirely resolve this matter currently before the board. Please let this matter letter confirm on behalf of my client that they agree to extend the time for the Board of Appeals to render and or file a decision on this matter until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So even though it's a request to continue, it's likely we're going to see new applications. But let's just take care of the administrative part of what was already filed with us. So.
So the request. That we continue this to November seventeenth.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Don't anyone here for six eleven Salem Street, we will see, it sounds like new applications or perhaps hearing this in our November hearing. Second letter from attorney Brian McGrail dated September eighth. Sixty-two Foundry Street LLC. At sixty-two and seventy-six Foundry Street, case numbers twenty-one, forty, forty-one, and forty-two. Requesting that we continue to matter till September twenty-second. While we have finalized matters to the satisfaction of the town engineer, the site plan needs to be revised to include the final conditions and notes as early as requested. If you saw your email today, board members, we just got their town engineer's letter. So they need time to reconcile some things on it, the final plans. And the letter is also confirming the extension for us to render a pilot decision until November thirtieth.
Dave, did you just read that you asked to continue that to November?
No, September twenty-second.
Okay, I move that we continue this to September twenty-second.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, the thought is that one might be done at that point, potentially, and we'll vote. But just, you know, they want to make sure they've got the final plans and draft conditions and all the rest, so.
Yeah.
And I would note also under comments, and we will discuss this later, that I will not be at that meeting. So I know I'm a voting member on this one, so. We'll just need to, I'm actually, yeah, we have this file, right?
Yes, the attendance sheet should be in the folder.
Yeah. Okay, sorry, I had to preach for them. So. Jim, Chip, Amy, Joe. And it looks like Tom. And Greg could also be voters. So we've got coverage on voters. They've been in full attendance to all the hearings. So just so Brian knows and for other interested parties, so.
That works for us as long as we have enough members.
Yep, sounds like we will, assuming it does end, but it sounds like we're close and it very well could be unless something comes up. But I just wanted to note that for the record that that I won't be there and we do have enough to cover if needed. Okay. Any other discussion under the motion to continue? All right, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Okay, so sixty-two Foundry at our next hearing in September. And finally, also from Brian McGrail dated September eighth, SGG Management Group LLC at ninety-seven to ninety-nine Water Street. Case numbers twenty-one to forty-three and forty-four. Requesting that we continue the matter till October thirteenth. Twenty twenty-one. While we've now resolved our issues with the municipal gas and light department, we are now in the process of making adjustments to the design for submittal to the board.
Move that we continue this to October thirteenth.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion?
Brian, are they looking to redesign everything?
No, Jim McBane, Amy, on behalf of the board, if you might recall, participated in the issue on the setback from the height from the electric wire. So they have a ten-foot distance which we had to get cert, we had to survey the wire to determine where the ten feet was. So a lot of work went in, and now because of that, we're going to have to step back the third floor of the building.
Okay.
To accommodate that wire and push it back a little bit on the back end.
Okay, so it's not that they just decided they just want to change the whole thing?
No, it's a redesign based on, to make sure that we comply with the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department's requirement of having a ten-foot setback from the wire.
Okay.
Not that they decided they want to change the project.
Perfect. Thanks, Brian.
Any other discussion? Okay, Chip?
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute, was it, did you make a motion? We were in a discussion, sorry. Okay, we were, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Okay, so we'll hopefully hear that project in October thirteenth hearing. Okay, with that. We proceed into our first continued hearing this evening. And that is twenty-one dash thirty-seven Crescent Commons Development LLC at forty-four, forty-six, and forty-eight Crescent Street.
Right, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Thank you. Thank you. For the record, attorney Brian McGrail representing Crescent Commons LLC, properties at forty-four through forty-eight Crescent Street in Wakefield, our development team of Peter Sandors, our architect, Rick Salvo, our site civil, who you're probably not going to have to hear a lot from Rick tonight, but he's on here somewhere. My clients, the principals of the entity, the Bocelli's are here. And also, I believe, the Ford's forty B consultant Ezra Glenn is here too. Since the last meeting, a few things or a couple of things have happened. We appeared before the Traffic Advisory Committee on September third, last Friday, we presented our revised plan of the forty-two units with all the changes that we discussed with the board on the, on the operations of the garage, residents only on one side, deliveries not on Crescent Hill anymore, no more trash on Crescent Hill. And we spent quite a bit of time with the Traffic Advisory Committee. I think it's important to note that Chief Scorey for the Police Department and Chief Sullivan for the Fire Department were both in attendance at that meeting and both provided some testimony to the Traffic Advisory Committee. You might recall, we had submitted a supplemental memo to them on May fourteenth, I believe it was. And addressing their initial concerns or questions that, that the town's peer review consultant, VHB, had had brought up during their initial review. And at that time, it was forty-five units. Now it's gone down to forty-two that we had discussed with them back, back in May. So we feel very, very good about how that TAC meeting went. If board members are interested, you can watch the video of it. I think it was very positive on all ends. They also issued a memo to your board this afternoon, which I have a copy and, you know, just kind of two highlights from that memo that the VHB, again, the town's peer review consultant stated, and I'll quote, "Based on VHB's review of the May fourteen, two thousand twenty-one memo and subsequent discussion at the May twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one TAC meeting, VHB is satisfied with VAI's, that's our consultants Vanessa's responses to our comments and recommendations." So that was all the stuff that they had asked for on data and accident ratios and site distance, and so it's been addressed to their satisfaction, those items that they had raised concerns about. And then in the conclusion on their memo, and we're happy to hear this, it says, "Based on DHB's review of the materials submitted throughout the review of the project in the discussion at the TAC meetings, VHB feels that the current proposal substantially reduces the impacts to the surrounding neighborhood compared to the original plan." So I'm sure you're going to want to look at that on your own in detail, but you know, those are, those are kind of the two conclusionary aspects of it that I think, you know, kind of kudos to everybody that's, that's worked on this. As we've gone along to your board, to the subcommittee with the changes that have been made that went before TAC, but I think it's a, it's a positive memo and a significant step in the right direction for everybody and for the project as a whole. So that's one thing that occurred. The second thing that occurred is we had another subcommittee meeting. That subcommittee meeting was in track of days here with the weekend. It was, I think, yesterday, right, Amy?
Yeah.
Yeah, yesterday, that we had an opportunity to meet with the subcommittee because at the, at the last meeting of your board, it was discussed that, you know, notwithstanding traffic, that there's still concerns on the massing of the building. And, you know, in particular, you know, I think it was discussed the fourth floor area of it. So we went into, you know, our meeting, kind of not knowing where we were going to go with that, with the subcommittee. Ezra Glenn, the forty B consultant on behalf of the board is there, and we thank him because he's always helpful and really constructive to try to, you know, get everybody to work together, which is something he's very good at. And at the end of the day, Mr. McBane came in on behalf of the subcommittee and, and, you know, kind of had a sketch with an idea of being able to reduce the fourth story on the Crescent Street side of this building fairly significantly on, on both ends. And in through discussions, Peter Sandors, our architect, and my client, to their credit, were very receptive to that thought and idea. And Peter actually went further and thought that, kind of spinning off of Jim's idea, they might actually be able to reduce more of the fourth story than Jim was proposing to reduce. That would result in, in the loss of at least a couple more units. And it would bring it down to forty, perhaps. You know, to move this forward, my client is willing to do that. If, if we can, you know, to, to, if that helps address the massing concern. So we're, you know, we are willing to do that. I'll put that out there. And I think, you know, where the subcommittee is coming from, and I'm sure you'll hear from your subcommittee members, but where your chapter forty B consultant Ezra is coming from is, you know, every time we go back to the subcommittee, it's a lot of work that goes into this, as you know, some of you have served on subcommittees, it's a lot of time. It's a lot of effort and money spent on the architect to do redesigns. And we're happy to do that. We want to continue the process in a cooperative effort, but we, we kind of need to know, I think, that, you know, that we're, we're kind of there. If we can trim that four-story, four-story down, obviously, the board needs to see it, you know, not just, you know, have it talked about, but is that, is that a pretty significant step? Because that's what we've heard is the massing, and I think you, Mr. Chair, said, you know, at the last meeting, get rid of, get rid of a portion of the top of that building somehow, or, you know, whatever, but, you know, that was mentioned, and we're trying to address those concerns. So that's where we are. I think it's, it's all positive information and a continued effort to try to work with everybody and move this forward. So that's kind of what I have to say. I don't know if any of the subcommittee members want to add or correct me or add to what I said, or, or perhaps you're a chapter forty B consultant. So that's what we have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and I assume with the meeting just happened yesterday and these things were discussed, there's no updated plans at this point to share, based on, it's still being worked. Yeah.
It would have to be worked, you know, but, but Jim had a sketch plan that really, you know, chopped off the couple of high ends on the building on the ends and and, you know, Peter thinks he can probably maybe go a little further with that from what Jim had, but it's going to be an effort to go back and spend the time and money to design and do that. And it will, again, it will result in the loss of, of a minimum of two units to do that.
Okay, I just want to confirm that, you know, for anyone who's interested, that we're not necessarily going to see updated plans tonight.
Correct.
Okay, where the meeting just happened yesterday. Fair enough. Jim or Amy or Ezra, do you want to add anything?
I, I might, I might say. I had thought about this because it left me a little at sea after the comments basically made as to how to, how to trim this more, way to trim it and still keep the architecture intact, even this, even the concept I threw out there the other day. I'm not sure it keeps everything intact. It's just cutting and pasting basically and taking electronically, taking some of Peter's images basically and trimming them and bring them in Photoshop and then trim them down again, so that you have a product that people can understand what you're talking about as opposed to just a sketch pad. So I had two plans, two elevations basically that I could show from different pieces that Peter did originally. And Peter had, I had come up with a further idea which I think probably will work, but until I see it. And as, as Brian said, it was, my stuff was sort of a catalyst to get them to get outside the box for a minute and look at what's possible. So we'll see as we move along with, with Peter comes up with. But it looks like my scheme still kept a portion of the fourth floor, but cut it down the front and had it step down, the, step down the hillside on the front, not just on the sides. Whether that would work out, I don't think it's necessary to study it further. Particularly if Peter can take the whole fourth floor off. So without losing character to this building, so let's see where he goes with this, without my spending time designing the building.
Right, okay, thanks, Jim. Amy or Ezra?
I'd yield to Ezra.
Okay, I'm sure. So I, I guess I, I agreed to sort of raise a concern that, that I'd raised in the working group because I think it really does affect the, the whole board's review, and I wanted to sort of just make it clear. First off, just, just for the record, I came into this process later than normal. I wasn't at the very beginning. But actually, that, that was in some ways easy for me because you guys did a great job fleshing out a whole bunch of concrete issues. And the developer seemed pretty willing to sort of make some changes. And, you know, over the last month or so, you've really cleaned up most of what I would call the concrete issues that have been resolved. You know, for everything from access, public safety, engineering, service, sewer water, traffic, you know, all the way down to things like where deliveries are going have largely been resolved. That said, the, and then the working group was asked to sort of work on these sort of last remaining issues, which were largely sort of expressed as sort of massing and density, the sort of concern that the building was out of character with the neighborhood. And so I think the first thing I agreed that I would make clear is it is to be understood this building is out of character with the neighborhood. And that, that's a sort of unfortunate aspect of forty B. If, you know, we, forty B exists in a context where we assume your town has come up with zoning that makes sense for the neighborhood. So anything that's going to make sense with the neighborhood would meet your zoning. This is coming in under the state's forty B. It doesn't fit your zoning and therefore will not, strictly speaking, kind of conform in those ways. So you need to resolve yourself to that, and this is where I often look to the town council to sort of beat the heavy and say, look, this is how this law works. But, you know, and I'm not a lawyer, but I will say that is basically the structure of this law. It is, it is designed to take certain powers away from the zoning board while putting you in the unenviable position of still having to approve the thing that you know doesn't quite fit. So what do you do? You make it fit as best as you can. First thing is you address all those concrete issues that you've done, and you really want to celebrate that. And then what I tend to recommend is, you know, something akin to the, you know, the Alcoholics Anonymous Serenity Prayer, actually, of kind of having the courage to change what you can and put your line in the sand for things you know need to be changed, but also the willingness to accept what you can't change. And some of that has to do with the fact that this will be higher density than what this neighborhood is accustomed to and, and more massive. That said, you've asked the working group to work on those issues, and I think they, 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 through a couple iterations did, and the latest basically is what you saw last meeting with the shoulders basically taken down, you know, to sort of step the building down on, on at least one side and maybe both one level and maybe pull it back a little from the front to create a more of a stepped effect. We basically wanted to be clear that this is a, an improvement on what you'd seen last time from the point of view of the working group, but it's not a radical difference, and we're not moving, you know, that, that the real key here was, I think, last time we framed it as, are we moving in the right direction? And I think that might have been the mistake, that given the need to get to a final approval before time runs out, we need to not know, are we moving in the right direction? But what, what attorney McGrail said, are we essentially there? Is this basically a kind of structure, a, a level of massing, a level of density that you can live with? And it may, maybe you don't have much choice anyways. I mean, maybe, no matter what you say, the Housing Appeals Committee will decide that, but if you can live with this basic framework that Brian and Jim and Amy have talked about, then I think it would be productive for the working group to then work through the details, the aesthetics. There are still more issues to work out. But they have to be within the framework of that. It can't be, you did a great job cutting twenty percent of it out, keep going in that direction, come back to us when you get twenty more, come back to us when you get twenty more. I think that was because, you know, my role here is primarily to, to, to get this thing to closure. But the, the unfortunate aspect is if we do nothing, this comes to closure anyways because it's time limited. And at some point, it's actually up to the applicant to decide to no longer give you extensions and say, you must vote on what I've given. They've, they've granted a couple of extensions, but I think at some point, somebody, either, either the board needs to say, this is enough, let's work out the details, or the developer needs to say, we're not really changing this substantially more. I, I'm sensing we are basically at that point from the point of developer. I don't want to speak for them. But, you know, where they essentially said, we could imagine this going, you know, down a little bit from the fourth to the third level on some parts of the building, but it's going to be four stories still. It's going to be probably around four units. We'll have enough parking for all those units. We've worked out the access, the engineering, all that. So that's, I guess, what I, what I wanted to sort of put out there. I do think if you're, if you're seriously thinking of limiting it more, you might want to talk to town council on what their opinion is. Because it's really not my role to advise you on that stuff as much as just to say, what's the most productive use of your time? And I'm trying to sort of, essentially keep this from getting stuck in the mud and the wheels spinning, knowing especially that you're going to run out of time. So. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Ezra. Very productive comments. We appreciate that.
Thanks, and I'm happy to answer questions and, and, you know.
Board members, any questions based on what you've heard so far?
I have a question for Amy.
Yes.
Not Jim, but Amy.
No.
Like, I don't want to listen to the architect. I want to listen to Amy.
Okay.
Because she's usually on the side if it's too big and where are we at?
So.
What are your thoughts?
My thoughts right now, you know, I'm still torn on this one. I've mentioned it in the meetings yesterday that, you know, ideally, obviously, the neighbors would want four units and the developers would want as many as they can get. That being said, they've been working with us. I'm not concerned about the look of the building. I know when Ezra was mentioning about it fitting into the neighborhood, I think you can look at that two ways, one fitting in size-wise, but one fitting in design-wise. I think design-wise, it fits in fine. It, it follows the, the overall design of the street, which I think is good. Something's going to be there, whether it's this or if, if we don't approve it and it goes through to it's not land court, but whatever the court is for the appeal, thank you. Yeah, then we get stuck with what we get stuck with. So I think they've been working with us a lot and listening to us. I like the idea of taking off the top floor because it's going to one, reduce the massing and two, reduce the density. Even if it's just a little bit, I think every little bit helps. So I'm curious to see what Peter comes up with. Removing that top floor, a portion of the top floor, just to see. You know, like I said, I'm not, I'm not all, of course, I think it's too big, but at the end of the day, whatever's going to be there is going to be too big. So I'm getting more okay, I guess, for lack of a better term, with it.
And I, Amy, if I could, I, I just want to add, thank you very much for pointing that out about the, the fit with the neighbor. I think that's exactly right, that I was very much talking about the, the massing overall, and I think you're right, that there are ways this can variously fit with the architectural style. And in some ways, that's what we're trying to save here, is if we, if we run out the clock continuing to talk about, unproductively talking about the massing, we'll lose any chance to focus on those issues. Whereas if we basically say, this is the shape of the building, let's get those details right. You know, and I think we're already largely there, so thanks.
Right, and I think I'd rather spend our time doing that, making sure that what's going to be there is going to look the best it can be, which I think is the direction we're going in with that. Like you said, if we're just going to talk about everything else, I think it's going to take away from, from that side.
I mean, what I'm, what I'm concerned about, Amy, is that we, you know, have Peter draw this up. We then come back and, you know, somebody on the board says, that's still too big. You know, there's time and money, and I don't care who spends the time and money. It's, it's about running out. And, and I kind of feel like I heard Ezra, and I believe too, that we're, we have a chance to make a bad situation as good as we possibly can do.
Right.
And I think the developer has worked pretty well, whether we like it or not, into those confines. So if we say tonight, okay, give us your final and best, then we have a choice to either accept it or deny it. Kind of, I, I don't think we can come back again and say, okay, this is great, give us another twenty percent.
Right.
So that's where I'm kind of, so I kind of, if I, without putting words in your mouth, I kind of heard that's where you're at too. Like, this is kind of the best we're going to get. Let's see what it looks like. We can either then live with it or not live with it. If they come back at forty or thirty-nine units, fine. But if we deny that, then it's going to be forty-two units and it could be vinyl siding.
Right.
Or no landscaping or whatever.
Right.
Because the appeals board doesn't care about that.
No. And then they could say, you know what, we're not doing the man-side roof. We're just going to throw up.
There's lots, lots.
Whatever they want to do, right. Whatever's going to be cheapest for the developer is what they would do, you know.
Right, no security, none.
Right, yeah, I think that we've worked with them and they've worked with us in the working group. You know, they've answered everything that we've said and, you know, obviously, they're doing their job and we're trying to do our job the best we can. I think that we've worked very well together, and at some point, there is a, this is what it is, you know, some people are going to like it. And at some point, there is a, this is what it is, you know, some people are going to like it, some people are going to hate it, but that's how life is and. Unfortunately, if something's going to go there, let's have the most say that we can in how it goes. And, you know, I think. A lot of people may not fully understand how forty B works and it might be frustrating to them and. And disheartening that this is going to be happening, but at the end of the day, this is where we're at, so.
Right, our hands are somewhat tied.
Exactly, yeah. So I'd rather work with them, you know, continue working in the working group and. And make sure that we can get the best outcome that we can get working together as a team.
Well, certainly from my standpoint, thank you for taking the time and effort. And all you and Jim have done, because I think you guys have worked tirelessly on this. And and as volunteers, you have you have put in your time. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Now, Mr. McBane, do you agree with Ms. Wall? So yes or no question?
Yeah, right.
I I worry I worry that we could end up with a thirty-nine Crescent Street, the brick blocks, it's four stories up the street.
Yeah. So you're kind of at the same spot that Amy's at?
Yeah, I mean, we're we're honing it down as best we can, basically, and I think if Peter can. Move forward with the concept that he's thinking about. I think that would be the best for everybody, basically, and I think that's pretty close to the end game. After that, it's finishes, materials, details, stuff like that.
Well, I I I hope you heard my thank you to Amy because it goes to you as well.
Of course.
Um, Ezra, I Michael Feely, I have a question for you. Um, maybe this isn't for even this project. But you guys are the the experts in this. Chapter forty B has exemptions for if you're over ten percent as a town. And chapter forty B has exemptions for. Having more than one point five percent of your. Land area covered by affordable houses, is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
And I don't believe some wayfield's ever done that study.
Sure. So the short answer, you know, and again. Don't take it from me, consult with town council, but the short answer is those are what what are referred to as um safe harbors, you know, they're essentially. You basically show you've done your part uh towards the goals of chapter forty B already. Um, there's a fairly limited window when you're able to to claim those and it's long past in this case. Um, you know, it was at the very beginning and the the one about the ten percent. Really, that's, I mean, that's, the state has a list and you know, if you if you think they're way off. You should be talking to them, but if it's a matter.
No, no, I I mean, we're somewhere between six or seven percent. I was just wondering about the land area study and whether or not Mass Housing Partnership gets involved in this.
Yeah, no, we we don't, other than uh there was a. A while back when the the state was trying to come up with clearer standards for what the heck they mean by one point five percent of the land area. Subtracting out the area zone for commercial and rivers. I mean, it got. It was it was written about as well as a lot of mass general law and really hard to implement, but. The general feeling was, I think, almost no towns met it. Um, and it was really a hard standard and. Um, but but regardless, in this case, I I believe it's too late and you could check with town council, but. Um.
Well, I'm, it's not often you get somebody from Mass Housing Partnership in front of you asking this question.
Sure, sure. And yeah, and and that's a great point and. Um. There are also, there are a few other ways, you know, that are worth outside of this project. But later, there are other ways worth looking into how you can basically. Uh, commit to making progress towards building affordable housing in the town and that can provide uh at least temporary relief. Yeah, um, that was some change they made a little while back because. It was it was taking towns too long to get to the ten percent and they wanted something of a carrot. To give you a little more control over your destiny as you got there. Um, but again, that has to be done ahead of time, so.
Okay, anything else, Mike, for now?
No, thank you.
All right, any other board members?
Uh, yeah, real quick, uh, this might be premature, but uh Peter, if you decide to chop off a couple of units. You plan on keeping the parking issue the same? You're not going to lose spots, are you?
I can, I can answer that. We don't, we don't know yet, uh, Joe. I mean, we we're going to keep the same ratio for sure. That, you know, the commitment with the with a visitor parking, so it'll be the same ratio. My goal. And I know I've said this to Peter, my goal is that, as I said, we're going to lose at least two units and and I'd like not to lose any parking. Yeah, I think that will be like a double home run because now, you know, that's, so I've stated that as a goal to the team. Um, and hopefully we can, we can meet that goal because that now that that deals with two things. It reduces the massing and increases the parking ratio. So.
Yeah, exactly.
Even though we're already over. Um, it's a good question and and that would be my, you know, I that's a stated goal. Don't know if we'll be able to do that, but we know we have to at least keep the same ratio.
Yeah, well, I mean, you're working on the roof, so if you if you shrink the roof, it really shouldn't affect the parking. You should obviously gain, you know, you'll you'll gain. You'll gain plus, you'll you'll lose, but you'll lose units and you'll still have the same amount of pockets. You'll actually.
Yeah, that it gets a little complicated because the way Mr. McBane designed it was going to lose potentially four units, so we might have to take up some of the parking area to get one of the units back. But Peter, this afternoon has come up with an idea that we wouldn't have to do that, so it's kind of a in in that. To me is a is a goal. I think it benefits everybody if we can do that.
Yeah, thanks, Brad.
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else?
I guess, Dave, I'd love to hear from you as the chair that put the gauntlet down last time.
Yeah, I did.
No offense, but.
No, none taken. Um, you know, I, as I always try to do, spoke from the heart, and that's the way I was feeling. Um. Again, encouraged that the teams made progress. Um. You know, like Amy said, I think I and and others have said, I I I just don't want to see what Peter comes up with. And I'll reserve judgment till then, but I'm I'm. I'm hearing what Ezra was saying and just, you know, getting to the point where. At some point, we have to resign ourselves to, you know, moving forward and. Um. And just working with them to finalize something um that, again, we we would maintain some control over uh versus. You know. Something that we may not have any control over, so. I'll I'll reserve judgment until the next hearing when we see that updated designer whenever we hear it. Um, and go from there.
And and if I may, I mean, again, just. Just for the record, it's really important. No one's asking anyone to vote on this at this point, but simply to say. Are we, in terms of these issues of amassing and density, have they been largely addressed and we can then move to, you know, so.
Agree, I agree, yeah.
You know, that's, thanks.
Yep. Okay. All right, board members, all set for now?
So with the idea then we have one more working group then to to move into those. The the more aesthetic and design issues, I mean, once they finalize this question of how. The overall shape.
Yeah, I mean, maybe hearing from Brian or Peter, like, do we think? That can happen for the next meeting or do we want a subcommittee to see it first and? And try to meet before the twenty seconds? So I have, I have a personal conflict on the twenty-second, Mr. Chair. I can only be here for an hour and that's going to be for. The Foundry Street project, so um this is going to have to get continued to the second meeting uh the first meeting in October. Uh, unless the board decided they wanted to do a special meeting on this project, that would be up to you, but but. Um, and. You know. I I as the board knows, I never like, you know. You know, Ezra and I kind of maybe disagree a little bit on this, but I never like. Um, when I like to, I don't like anybody having their back to the wall with time. I just don't think that's productive. Um, you know, I I, you know, so, you know, where I can't make a meeting, I'm happy to extend the time again just because I I don't want. I don't want that to be um. A detriment to to trying to get this done. I I just don't think it's fair to the board. It's not fair to anybody to say, hey, you know, your your back's the water, within reason. Uh, if we're moving in the right direction, same direction, I just think that's a positive thing to do. Um, so.
And that's that's fine with me. I have no problem with their with extensions. I uh mostly, I just worry at some point. Applicants stop granting them and then you're up against it. So, yeah, the the more you want it.
Yeah, because I mean.
Space for the improve the designs and bring it. I guess the question was, is that something you want to bring? Do you think you have enough guidance from from Jim and Amy and the and the working group to bring the designs right to this group? I mean, to to the to the zoning board again? Or is it better to bring it to the working group first and like, you had a thought?
Working group first, I would say.
I uh second that, basically, and it might be two meetings. Given the frame, basically, because right now, I I get a sense as to what Peter wants to do. But I also want the ability to comment on it, and if I comment on it in a way that requires him to work a little bit more before coming here. Then maybe there's a second meeting to clean it up. So I I'm I I'm for at least one, if not two, before we come back to the board.
Yeah, it sounds perfect to have the extension of time and moving it to the meeting in October. Give everybody enough time to kind of get it to that point.
Okay, and that October meeting would be October thirteenth, so we'd have to do a couple of things first. Um, you know, we'd have to continue this meeting and agree when, and it sounds like October thirteenth would be the target. We would then. Uh, probably want to um have a motion to extend the timeframe, which is currently October thirty-first. And whether that's November thirtieth or perhaps December, as long as we think is reasonable, just to then. Maybe get to those other details and have enough time to to vet them. Um. Whether it's a committee or back at the full board. Um, so we we really need two decisions at some point tonight. Um. And that sounds fine to me, to have the subcommittee see it first. Um, anyone else comment either way? Okay. Um. Okay, so. I'm not sure about, again, public testimony. I think we've heard kind of everyone's concerns. We haven't seen new plans. I think when we see the new plans. And get a chance to all sort of digest them. Then there'd be an opportunity to to comment on them and see where we go from there, but. I I think until there's really new testimony, I'm not sure there's a. There's a compelling need for public testimony tonight unless other board members feel differently.
Dave, I just have a question.
Sure.
Not on public testimony.
Okay.
Did we put to bed the? Traffic tonight because I I I, or are we going to, okay, all right. I haven't looked at it, obviously. I quickly looked and it said there's some things in there that say like. You know, to be discussed or something like that.
Right, so what, thank you for raising that. Yes, we just got the letter today, literally like five o'clock Eastern. So everyone should re- review it in in light of what Brian said. He quoted a couple of parts of it, but everyone should just digest the whole thing. And let me know, I again, projects like this, we're, we tend to uh want to invite the TAC. Um. And and then we plan to discuss it at a hearing, and if there's questions from the board or members of the public, there's an opportunity to do so with them present. Um, so is that something we could also target for October thirteenth where we have their final letter? They think they're basically closed unless something comes up, so. Brian, you think that's reasonable from your standpoint?
Yeah, whatever, you know, obviously, you know, I I think Greg's right. I, you know, I quoted a couple of highlights out of there and there's other stuff in there that I'm sure the board's going to want to want to go through in some detail. Um, and.
And it doesn't seem like anything huge, or just from my skin from five o'clock. It's just there is some things like to be considered or. They they say like you should consider a sidewalk or a crosswalk. How do we consider that without their input, so.
Yeah, okay, there's there's a couple of things that we committed to that I think they might have left out um that we we could talk about too. Like they talked about potentially, uh, um.
Uh, well, Brian, Brian, point of order, we won't get into it then.
Yeah, good point.
If there's other things, then just bring them up that night or, you know, pre- prepared to to speak to them then. I just, I don't want to get on that path until we're ready.
Point well taken, point well taken.
Yeah, um. So, uh, so with that, then we would uh plan.
Oh, Dave, could I just add one thing? I would, however. Like to see a memo from the developer that they've committed to that might not be included in the TAC. Before, before we have the conversation.
Okay, Brian, if you want to reflect those on a plan, if that's easiest way, because we always like things in plans. Or a memo, uh, however you feel, again, depending on what they are.
Yeah, they did the minimalist, but you know, I think one of the key things is, you know, in 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 the board kind of touched this and just for the, you know, for the for the public process part of it is. We've committed to a lot that we're we're happy to entertain as conditions of approval. And the board touched on this, that, you know, if the project were denied. And it goes to the Housing Appeals Committee and it's overturned and approved by them, there wouldn't be any conditions. That we've that we're willing to e- accept as part from the board. That's just the way that that process works. So, so, you know, I want to be clear, we're happy to state what the conditions would that we would agree to, but those are conditions that we would agree. Uh, to the board with the board, but uh not on the appeal process.
Understood. Okay, anything else, board members? Um, so Brian, we should probably entertain that the extension first before we actually continue the hearing because that basically closes it out, right? Or do we want to continue and you're on mute? Um, or we do it in one vote? I don't know.
We, at this point, we'd be happy to continue until the end of November.
For a decision?
Yeah, yeah. Extend the public hearing.
So that gives us how many?
So you close the hearing, yeah. So Brian, is that correct? You that would be extending the, closing the public hearing on eleven-one? And then they would still have time for the rendering the decision, correct?
I gotta be, we gotta be careful on that, Ezra. I don't want to. Um. I don't want to. Let me just take a look at the regulation because I don't want to misrepresent something to the board. Um, hang on one second.
Different. I was looking at that schedule too, not too long ago.
The public hearing's already open till the end of October anyways, right?
Wait, but it says extension till then, but.
Yes, yes, that's what, yeah, sorry, that's what I should say.
So by default, you get a hundred and eighty days from when it's open. We've extended it to October. Once you close, you have forty days to render a decision.
Yeah, no, understood that part, but if we're extending it. That'd just be the next logical step.
Right, did he say eleven-one instead of ten thirty-one? That's not much on extension.
Yeah.
November thirtieth.
I think he meant thirtieth, yeah.
Yeah, and then we have forty days for this.
So that would be the extension, the date to close the public hearing. You certainly can. And and some boards do discuss the decision and the conditions as part of the public hearing. So when they close the public hearing, they basically have a decision.
Yeah.
But that's a cushion that some town councils will say you do have. Um, I try not to give opinions on it, but.
Got it.
So Brian, are you okay with an extension until eleven-thirty? To close the public hearing?
You're on mute, Brian.
I just need to take a quick look at the regulation so I understand it before I before I do that. Hang on a second.
You're on mute, Brian.
Thank you, Greg. Ezra, you're right, uh, it allows a hundred and eighty days. Um, for the um public hearing has to be closed in a hundred and eighty days, and then there's forty days after that. To um. To render a decision. So, so I think what you're asking Ezra is that we would extend it till November. I I meant to say November thirtieth, not November first. Uh, November thirtieth for the board to close the public hearing. Is that what, is that what you suggested, Ezra?
Correct, that's what I suggested.
Yeah, and I think that that's.
And it, so that wouldn't eat into their time to then render a decision after. We would hope that they do because nobody wants to waste time. Rendering decisions when everything's worked out, but 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 they do deserve that time under the law, so, yeah.
Yeah.
And then I have a question. What can be discussed in that forty days?
The general, again, check with town council because it's a legal question, but my general understanding is everything can be discussed. You're deliberating and rendering a decision. The the issue is, once you close a public hearing, you're not supposed to be bringing new material into the hearing process. Right?
Including like what materials might be on the outside of the building?
Any new evidence cannot be.
Any new evidence, and of course, it's a little complicated because in theory, like every time Brian opens his mouth. some new information is coming in, right? And that's the nature of talking and and committing even, you know, you know, winking or, but in general, the the key is, the decision you render must be based on all the information that was as part of the public record before you closed the hearing.
Okay.
So if you then later made a decision and the evidence for it appeared after that, I I believe town council would say that's a problem.
So we can go back and check all our notes, make sure we get all the conditions square and all that.
Yeah, but you don't want to have like another peer review memo coming in after that.
In my experience, Ezra, that a lot of, when I've done forty Bs in in other towns is boards will actually in the event you decided you were going to approve the project, you would work on a draft decision during those forty days.
Yeah, and even before, even before you.
Yeah, so you know, so basically then 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 you have the decision, because what the regulation says is that once you render that decision, it has a written decision has to be filed with the town clerk within fourteen days
Yep.
of that, and there's a little bit of controversy in the law, whether that fourteen days is included in the forty days or outside of it, and you know, you've probably dealt with that, Ezra, and most boards of appeals will be conservative to protect themselves and make sure they file that decision within the forty day period that it's.
Yeah, and I always encourage that, but again, that is one where different town councils will disagree, but um but you'd really have to be dragging your feet to take to the last day of their extension, use all forty days, and then fourteen days before you filed it. You know, I think that you would not do if you really felt you've resolved it all. You'd want to say, we're done, we're sewing it up, we're writing it, we're spell checking, and we're registering it, so.
Our goal would be to be in in accord with the board by the end of November, and then to work on a draft decision that will be voted on and then clocked in, assuming that we can get there.
Alright, so bringing it back then, I think we need a, the chair would entertain a motion to continue this hearing to October thirteenth, at which time we will focus on the updated design from the subcommittee um hearings between now and then, and um traffic. Um, as well as part of that motion would be to extend the public hearing from uh to November thirty.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Am I vote yes? Okay.
I'll send in a letter to Gail confirming that for her to clock in with the town clerk tomorrow.
Thank you. Thanks for the updated information tonight, and we look forward to the next hearing.
Great.
Thanks, everybody.
Jim and Amy, are you available tomorrow for a subcommittee?
What time? Are you kidding? Oh.
Yeah, just let us, uh, I'll let Peter let, uh, we'll let you know when we have something to show you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Amy, the problem was you showed him how you could use your phone and drive at the same time, so he thinks you're available anytime.
That's how I roll.
I get a car driving, rolling interest.
See how quick I can be when it's early.
Okay. Just checking off the agenda topics here, because we continued a few. Alright, so the next continued hearing I have on our agenda is twenty one fifty, fifty one and fifty two CCF Corner Power Property Company LLC at two hundred to four hundred Quinipowid Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Brian McRae here on behalf of the applicant. Our development team is here again. Um, tonight we are going to deal with Site Civil. Um, Nick Delakova is here from Allen and Major. He's our Site Civil Engineer. Uh, he's been working diligently uh with um Bill Renaud, the town engineer, to try to address all issues slash concerns that Mr. Renaud uh has raised as far as this project goes. Um, so um I think um to save time and be efficient, I'm going to hand it over to Nick. Um, he has a PowerPoint presentation uh that we'd like to put on uh put on uh for the board in that regard, and then once we're done and uh look at future scheduling, I can give you an idea of where T A C stands on this, because I know folks have been waiting for traffic, etc., so. Uh, happy to do that, and we can talk about scheduling.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, are you able to see my screen?
Yeah.
Alright, so for the record, again, my name is Nick Delakava, Civil Engineer with Allen and Major Associates. Uh, I've been heavily involved and responsible for the design and the stormwater management system onsite uh as well as the utilities serving the property. As Brian mentioned, I have been working closely behind the scenes with uh Bill Renaud to ensure our design meets the goals set forth by the town as well as the standards outlined in the Massachusetts uh Stormwater Handbook. So before I jump in, uh, I just wanted to bring everyone up to speed where we started and kind of where we are today. Uh, back in March of this year, the applicant filed the initial application and documents, followed by a resubmission a few weeks later. Uh, that resubmission showed some minor adjustments to building number three and the adjacent surface lot. The town engineer Bill Renaud issued a review memo uh near the end of April commenting on the proposed design. I then worked closely with Bill to address and respond to the initial comments by providing updated plans and documents electronically in May, behind the scenes, kind of between the two of us and our development team. In July, Bill uh provided informal responses to the updated materials. It was noted that many of the original comments in the April memo had been addressed, but also included new additional comments. Uh, we have since updated our design to address the second round of comments and submitted materials last Friday to the board and the town engineer. The submission included updated civil plans, drainage report, and a response memo. The memo provided a response to each of the original D P W comments from April, as well as follow-up comments in July. We also filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission on August third. Uh, this process is ongoing, and it's expected to run in parallel with the Z B A hearings. Our second meeting with Conservation Commission is actually tomorrow night. So I'm not going to get, spend much time on reviewing the existing site, as I'm sure most of you are probably very familiar with it at this point. Uh, Goddard Consulting, uh, who's our environmental consultant, also did a great job discussing all the resource areas that exist around the property at a previous meeting. These resource areas include a one hundred foot uh riverfront buffer shown here in purple. A lighter purple is the two hundred foot riverfront area. We have the wetland resource areas shown here is green surrounding the entire perimeter of the property. And lastly, we have uh bordering land subject to flooding uh shown here in orange. You can see that it it encroaches in onto the uh perimeter driveway uh more significantly in the northern corner here, where I think a lot of people are familiar with uh it collecting rainwater during, after those large storm events. We're gonna skim through some photos, before and after rain event photos. Uh, this is facing the one hundred Quinipowid property off in the distance. You can see there's a small pipe that runs underneath the walkway. Uh, during larger rain events, this one was actually taken by Brian um last Thursday, I believe, after we had all that rain, that small little pipe gets overwhelmed. It's unable unable to convey that stormwater uh beyond the sidewalk. It ends ends up ponding. I mean, right now, as shown, it's probably like four to six inches of water just sitting in the parkway itself. It's the same story as you move clockwise around the the perimeter driveway. Uh, this is just showing the deteriorated curves, all the sediment buildup that eventually gets pushed closer and closer uh eventually into the wetlands and uh the wet swale along the the highway. Uh, this is closer to the northern corner. This is probably the more severe area onsite. Uh, as well as this one down below, this is that corner as you turn left, if you're coming from Lowell Street, traveling towards North Ave. Uh, this is the the corner without rain. I mean, you can see all the sediment, the broken curb, the eroded side. Soon as it rains, that all fills up, that sediment gets transported through the um the bituminous swell and eventually finds its way to the wetlands and and ultimately the lake. This is on the east side of the property, uh, looking at Lake Quinipowid off in the distance here. Uh, did you lose the cursor? Can you see my cursor still?
We can see the cursor.
Alright, so there's the lake off in the distance. Uh, this riprap swell pretty much catches a lot of the the runoff from the the surface parking lot. It finds its way into these uh shallow, wet grass swales just beyond the uh the parking lot. They eventually fill up. This is looking back towards our property now, the lakes to our left. The swell fills up it, and during large events, it overflows across the property into a low point near the walkway. That low point consists of these three um eight inch uh H T P E pipes. They discharge directly underneath the rock, the walkway and into the lake. These are just some quick examples of other point discharge locations where there's this eighteen inch pipe that handles a lot of the runoff from the existing building. It discharges it right into the wetlands and the drainage swell along the highway. This is that same drainage swell collecting the trash, debris, and um this is one example of a graded inlet that's on the site. It's a standard catch basin. It's near our loading area of the existing building. It collects stormwater and discharges directly into the lake. Uh, we we actually tracked down the other end of this pipe. It's right at the bank. Um, so all the stormwater reaches the lake pretty much unmitigated and untreated. So moving on to to the proposed improvements, uh, and given the current condition of the site and the resource area restrictions, the proposed design had many challenges to overcome. We began by first setting four primary goals. The first and arguably arguably the most important was to improve the quality of stormwater entering the lake. This is achieved by capturing the majority of the total suspended solids, including large floatables, petroleum-based contaminants and sediment. It also requires a substantial reduction in the total nutrient load leaving the site. Nutrient loads are focused primarily on nitrogen and phosphorus. Reductions and are quantified based on the capacity of the stormwater management system and onsite utility, sir, um, excuse me, sorry. Stormwater management system to hold a certain volume of stormwater onsite. Once we accounted for the quality of stormwater leaving the site, which became the driving factor in our design, um, the remaining goals. Excuse me. Uh, the remaining goals uh fell right into place. These included reducing the frequency and severity of onsite flooding, groundwater recharge and peak rate attenuation. Lake Quinipowid has fell victim to years of untreated point source pollution through stormwater discharges all around the lake uh which have ultimately rendered the lake unswimable. To combat this issue, the Clean Lake Committee was established. One of the primary goals set forth by the committee uh is nutrient and load reduction. The committee has identified approximately twenty four properties and large watersheds around the lake, which discharged large volumes of untreated stormwater into the lake. Two hundred Quinipowid Parkway, this development is on that list. Uh, and therefore, the the town engineer, who is also chair of that committee, has recommended an eighty percent or above annual reduction in nutrient loads leaving our development. So first, we began by identifying the existing loads generated from the current use of the property. We calculated this to be a hundred and seventy six pounds per year. From there, we worked our way backwards, sizing the stormwater management system components to capture and treat the required volume of runoff onsite. The proposed design will reduce the nutrient load down to thirty four pounds per year. This is a reduction of a hundred and forty two pounds per year or eighty percent. As mentioned previously, this was the driving factor in the design of our stormwater management system. The design exceeds all other performance standards outlined in the Stormwater Handbook and Wetlands Protection Act. Standard number two in the handbook requires projects to provide peak rate attenuation for all stormwater flows leaving the site. The project will reduce flows offsite by seventy nine percent during a two-year storm, fifty one percent during a ten-year storm, and twenty eight percent during a hundred-year storm. The volume of runoff discharging from the site will also see a reduction. Forty six percent during a two-year storm, twenty six percent during a ten-year, and fifteen percent during the hundred-year. Standard three in the handbook requires projects to approximate the annual recharge from uh pre-development conditions. This standard has been met by introducing an additional one acre of green space on the property and infiltrating thirty four thousand cubic feet of stormwater onsite. That's three point four times the amount of the required by the handbook, uh, which is a significant improvement over over the existing condition. Standard number four in the handbook requires a project to remove eighty percent of the average annual post-construction load of total suspended solids or T S S. This is measured by the water quality volume provided onsite. Stormwater management system has been sized to capture fifty five thousand cubic feet of stormwater, which equates to one point seven times the amount required by the handbook. Lastly, the site has been designed to provide compensatory flood storage in accordance with the Wetlands Protection Act, land subject to flooding. As shown earlier in the presentation, the floodplain extends up into the development area of the property. Some of these areas will be filled uh to accommodate the new layout of the building and parking areas. Therefore, compensatory storage has been provided, which meets and exceeds the current volume by thirty six thousand cubic feet. The Stormwater Handbook outlines a number of best management practices or B M Ps uh that could be used to meet these standards. Stormwater uh management system is really just a combination of these B M Ps designed to work in harmony with one another to improve the quality and quantity of stormwater leaving the site. Um, the following B M Ps are are some examples of what we use uh in this proposed development. So a picture of a rain garden uh or frequently called a bio retention area. And it's essentially a shallow depression filled with sandy soil topped with a thick layer of mulch implanted with dense native vegetation. Runoff is directed into the cell via pipes or sheet flows across the surface. Runoff then percolates through the soil media like a filter and eventually infiltrates into the groundwater. Our rain gardens will be equipped with overflow inlets and under drains to convey larger storms to the underground chambers. Uh, the underground chambers proposed for this project are manufactured by A D S Storm Tech. Uh, they are plastic, open bottom corrugated arch chambers. Uh, the chambers are connected in a series and configured in rows surrounded by crushed stone on all sides. The void space below the chamber uh allows for stormwater to back up inside the system and slowly be released uh through an outlet control structure or infiltrated into the ground. Another B M P is the infiltration basin. Uh, these are proposed, uh, these are very similar to the rain gardens in that they are above-ground areas used to hold and infiltrate stormwater, uh, but they they don't include a thick layer of mulch or dense vegetation such as trees or shrubs. Uh, these basins are also not equipped with under drains. The larger size of these basins uh allow them to hold a greater volume of water uh than the rain gardens. Runoff will be piped to each of these basins with emergency overflows uh to mitigate some of the larger storms. And as you'll see in a second, uh, we provided these vegetated filter strips uh along the edge of the paved uh parkway. Uh, they're essentially located near each of the existing locations of those uh paved drainage wells that I showed pictures of earlier. Uh, the filter strips are equipped with a stone diaphragm that acts as a as a level spreader, slowing down surface runoff from the parkway and distributing it over and eat uh evenly over a larger surface area and into the wet basin. So instead of going down that tight paved swell, uh runoff enters these stone diaphragms, it slowly starts to fill up and uh level out and spread across the the backside of um the grass slope down into the, what we're calling is these wet basins. Uh, and the wet basins propose uh incited intentionally within the floodplain and groundwater. Uh, these B M Ps use a permanent pool of water as the primary mechanism to treat the stormwater. The pool allows sediment to settle and remove soluble pollutants. Each wet basin is equipped with additional dry storage capacity, controlled peak discharge rates during large storms. These basins will overflow into the boring wetlands uh and eventually into the drainage swells and lake. So here's the color rendering of uh the the proposed site. I've highlighted all of these BMPs I just went over in purple here. This is, we have two bio retention areas. There's one located in this courtyard here and a second one, second smaller bio retention located here, all within near building three. They've been sized to handle a large portion of the roof runoff from building three. As water enters these bio retention cells, they infiltrate into the ground and are treated through that soil media. During large storm events, there are overflows that allows the stormwater to bypass these rain gardens and enter directly into the underground chambers. We have three different systems for these underground chambers as a larger square shaped to the south of building three. There's a long skinny rectangular section throughout the site driveway between building three and the two smaller buildings. And then a slightly larger system just north of building three. Now, those underground chambers function primarily to handle all the surface runoff from the surface parking lots and the driveways. They enter through catch basins with deep sumps, travel through a series of manholes and underground pipes and eventually discharge into these chambers. As the chambers fill up, they infiltrate that collected stormwater into the ground. And during large storm events, they're equipped with overflows to allow that stormwater to bypass the system and continue on out into some of these vegetated landscaped areas that eventually overflow across the parkway and into the wet basins on the backside. These wet basins are again, they're sighted in the floodplain and within the groundwater. They're meant to hold some water and that's how they actually treat the pollutants from the fresh stormwater that's running off the pavement and the edge of the parkway. Eventually, all these wet basins are equipped with an emergency overflow that will discharge into the wetlands and into the lake. Obviously, that would be treated stormwater at that point. And then lastly, we have the infiltration basins, which are located along the backside of building one and two. It is a single hydraulically connected infiltration basin, although it might look like different cells. These are actually footpaths that cross over some of these low points along the meandering walkway through our site. Those basins also handle some of the roof runoff from building three. The basins are equipped with an emergency overflow here where my cursor is. And that's located near those three eight-inch HPE pipes that I showed you pictures of earlier and those eventually discharge right to the lake again. So that's really our stormwater management in a nutshell. I'll just real quickly skim through utilities for the project. We've been working closely with Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light. We've coordinated our transformer locations, electric manhole locations and our gas services with them already. Gas services for the site are shown here in this purple magenta color. There, we've been made aware that gas will only be available for the amenity spaces inside each building and not for the residential units. We, I show the electric in green. We pick it up on the southern corner of Quinapawat Parkway, right at the corner of our site. And we run it all the way through the neighborhood driveway where we have some transformers serving building three and where it continues on through and connects back to a utility pole on the northern end of the parkway. We're utilizing a lot of the same services for the existing building, including sewer. There's a twelve-inch sewer line that runs up into our property. We'll be connecting to that with building number one, two and three. It's shown here in red. We also have a new water line running throughout the whole site. There's an existing eight-inch line that runs between our property and Lake Quinapawat. We'll be connecting that on each end to create a loop. As shown here in blue, we run it through the neighborhood driveway and also around the backside of building three. We've situated several new hydrants. There's three new ones along the back of building three. There's two new ones on the front of building three. And then we're utilizing a few existing hydrants on the backside of building one and two between our development and the lake. And so with that, I'd just like to open it up for questions.
Jimmy, want to go?
Yeah, so the underground chambers, basically. I don't know that on this site, they'd be in much effect because of the groundwater level. Unless this site is going to be raised up, they seem to be useless whereby, in fact, a ponding area basically to collect that water would be of more function than a bunch of chambers that basically going to be half filled to begin with just because they're so close to the lake and the groundwater is there. And you can see that to the right, basically in the wetlands that are there, that that's always filled with water. It's never dry and that reflects basically what the groundwater is across the whole site. So I, I don't know how you expect those chambers to work under this environment.
No, that's a great point and great questions. So we have performed many test pits on the site, which were witnessed by Bill Renault. And we established a seasonal high groundwater at elevation eighty-one. And you are correct, really the only way to get these chambers to work would be to raise the site. And that's exactly what we're doing. We're raising the whole interior portion of this development where these chambers are located. So and they're situated so they maintain a two-foot separation between that seasonal high groundwater. So the groundwater we've established is at elevation eighty-one and the bottom of the chambers sit at elevation eighty-three.
So how much of a fill are you going to need?
It varies across the site. There are portions of the existing. The existing building sits at elevation eighty-six point seven plus or minus. Our finished floor of our building is at eighty-seven point eight. So it's about a foot higher than the existing building.
So you're going to have to bring in all that fill?
That's correct. Yeah, so the primary focus here, what's driving the fill obviously is stormwater management. We're trying to provide a high-quality treatment train for all the stormwater that lands on our property and eventually discharges into the lake.
The other question I guess I had, which is similar to Jim's with the water being stagnant in all the wetlands, don't you end up with stagnant water in all these, what you would call, I guess, wet areas? And isn't that just a mosquito and other bug breeding ground?
Yeah, so these wet basins, they are designed to hold a shallow amount of water because again, they're within the groundwater table.
Yeah.
The idea is to create larger pockets of these excavated areas, these wet basins to keep the stormwater from entering the parkway. Essentially providing storage beyond the limits of the parkway, near and adjacent to the wetlands to keep the rest of the parkway dry. I mean, the site's in the floodplain, so there's going to be standing water somewhere, no matter really how you dress it out.
But, okay, so not once did you say mosquito breeding ground in any of that answer. So you tried to deflect. How are you going to control that? I mean, you're now putting it like right in front of all the buildings. Now it's off to the side and I get that it's a wetland. Can this be sprayed? Is that against CONCON regulations or the or the lake regulations to spray for mosquitoes? What's your mosquito?
Do you have a mosquito control? Yeah, we have a mosquito control plant. It's located in the O and M section of our drainage report.
Okay. Secondly, what's the maintenance of all these things? I mean, we blow leaves in, all of a sudden, the layer that's supposed to be saturating the water now has a layer of leaves. What's the maintenance of all these gardens that? And what is the certification of making sure that they work as designed?
Well, for first, the maintenance, it's typically at least at a minimum, spring and fall and or yeah, spring and fall twice a year. And you can see these basins from wherever you're standing. So as if trash is accumulated, there's going to be landscapers out here. Their duty would be to clean these these visible BMPs, above-ground BMPs. Where a lot of times maintenance gets neglected is in these underground chambers. But we've established a maintenance schedule for these as well. Typically, it's about four times a year at a minimum and after large rain events greater than an inch. But there is some fail safes here. We have the deep-sown catch basins, which have the four-foot sumps to help hold that accumulated sediment and let it settle out before it gets to these systems. And the stormwater, as it enters each of these chambered systems, enters an isolator row. And it's essentially a row of chambers that has a geotextile below it that doesn't allow the sediment to pass. And it holds that sediment in those isolator rows before it reaches the rest of the system. So when it comes time to clean these systems, your primary focus is going to be just on these isolator rows and not the whole system together.
I guess I have one last question. I think this might be for Mr. McGrath. Brian, let's say this goes forward and these are all accepted by the engineering department. We often come into the, you know, who inspects the installation? Who verifies that it's been built as specified? Because this doesn't fall under the building department, right? Because it's outside of the building and we kind of always have this area of not my job, man. Do we hire a consultant for the town to oversee this? Does the engineering department have staff to oversee it? How does this get handled?
Yeah, that's a good question. So normally it would be the engineering department that would monitor. This might be too big for them.
That's my thought or not maybe too big for them to handle along with other their daily duties.
That's right. So whatever Mr. Renault needed for peer review or, you know.
Inspection services during building.
Yep.
Just to add to that, it's typically a bottom-of-bed inspection when they're excavating these pits to install these chambers that the town engineer would want to see. And then a lot of times it's conditioned as part of the approval that especially during if and when we ever get an order of conditions with the Conservation Commission. It's special condition that we provide an as-built plan of all these underground systems. And we, as the professional engineer, Alan and Major Associates, have to certify substantial compliance with the originally designed plan. So that's kind of where the checks.
So would you guys, would you guys inspect them and have inspection inspection reports during the process?
Yes, yep, that's standard procedure.
Just so, just like an engineer would for the bill.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay.
We'll go out there. We take pictures. We visually inspect the bottom of bed.
Yeah. Got it. No, that answered my question. Thank you.
You good, Chip?
I'm good.
All right, I'm going to jump in. So you asked, one of the main questions I was thinking was about the mosquitoes. So I'd be curious to look at the O and M that talks about the mosquito mitigation, I guess you can call it. I'd also be curious to see what CONCON has to say about that as well as DPH. I don't know if that's something that we normally have weigh in. But I myself would be curious to know what their thoughts are on, you know, probably after seeing CONCON's report with standing water. Has that been sent to us yet? I don't think I've seen that. Is this the mosquito?
This is the mosquito. We don't have to go into details right now, but it is included in section two of our drainage report. You should have an electronic copy of it. If you don't, just let me know.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to take a look at that. Thank you. And then if you go back to, I forget which plan it was, but there was something that had talked about the the gas lines coming in. Can you just let me know what those gas lines are for? Oh, there was that one. Yeah, proposed gas service.
Yeah, so right now there's a gas line that runs along our property and the lake. It's these dashed black lines. It's kind of difficult to see on this plan, but it runs through here where my cursor is going. And we're making a new connection to the existing services that currently service the existing building. And those new gas services will provide gas to these amenity spaces for building three and building one and two, but not the residential units.
Okay, so that's not, that doesn't fall under the moratorium then that we have?
Correct, no, yeah. Wakefield Municipal Gas has confirmed that we'd be able to service these amenity spaces and the restaurant cafe with gas.
Okay, and not the, not the units themselves?
Not the residential units.
Okay, and then just back to my other question, is it something that DPH would normally weigh in on or no? I don't know if that's a Brian question.
I don't know the answer to that.
Probably DEP, not DPH.
Well, I was thinking more DPH just as a, because I mean, if it is a problem, I mean, that's something that could fall under public health, right?
I think, I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's important to know. And I think you've got standing water on the site out there now.
Yeah.
Walk the lake. That wetlands is always.
Oh, it's brutal. Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, so I, this is an existing problem. It's not a problem that we're going to create.
We're creating new spots right by residences.
I don't know if you're creating more standing water.
I mean, no, so if.
No, but you're putting it right next to.
Putting people.
Yeah, no, understood.
So I'd just like to make it clear that the volume of water that's going to be reaching the outskirts where that standing water currently exists today is going to be significantly reduced under the proposed condition. And that's one because of the extra acre of green space that we're providing. But primarily, it's because of all the large volume of water that we're holding onsite in the bio retention areas in the chambered systems and in the infiltration basins at the backside of building one and two. And all of those three systems that I just named have been designed to infiltrate into the groundwater rather than let it flow over land across the parkway and just kind of sit at the surface of these already pre-saturated areas.
Okay, Amy, you'll follow up for now?
Yeah.
Okay, other board members, any questions?
Mr. Chair, quick question. Mike Feely. Is this, is this project, does it breach any of the MEPA thresholds? Are you doing a MEPA track with this as well or are you exempt from that?
No, I don't believe it.
I think I can answer that.
All right.
We don't have any state permits in association with this project and we don't meet any thresholds that MEPA would require as well.
I was just looking to see if there's any state enhanced review of the environmental information you're showing us. Guess not.
And Matt, you're saying there is not?
There is not, no.
So it's just up to us?
And the Conservation Commission, who has followed DEP guidelines, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I mean, I guess the other last question I'd have in regards to electrical is our favorite conversation. Which is that these transformers now are right along the main roadway. Why?
Well, they need to, you need to have access, the utility company needs to have access to them. And the locations where we're currently showing them were dictated by Wakefield Municipal Gas. Were dictated by Wakefield Municipal Gas.
And so push back, tell them you hate the locations.
Well, uh, I mean, there's, there's limited areas to show these. Uh, I think everywhere they're going to be, I mean, they have to be along some sort of traveled way in order to.
Put them to the back end of both those parking lots towards 128. I mean, I, it, it, trust me, Wakefield Municipal Light puts the tran- will put the transformer at your front door if you let them. Push back. These are in horrible locations.
Yeah, we can look into that.
We have photos of them actually doing what Chip says, and they were not small boxes. These were large pieces of equipment as big as switchgear, basically.
Huge. These are going to be huge.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we also, they'll also be covered with landscaping. Uh, I mean, they're not just going to be these open boxes.
You can't cover them totally with landscaping because they're going to tell you you have to have three foot access and this access and that access. So they don't get covered.
I, I think we can, we can go back to. I think we can go back to the municipal and see the areas of the site that are feasible, given the existing infrastructure in the area. And see if we can push these towards, uh, I, uh, 128.
Yeah.
I think that's at least worth trying out here.
I mean, especially, I, I, the, the ones on the left-hand side. I don't know. The ones on the right-hand side, right in front of the building, right on the corner. I mean, you're, you're going to hate that. Or.
Residents.
Yeah, whatever. I've said my piece.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else?
Uh, Dave, this is Tom. Just a quick question. Are we going to wait for Concon to finish? So we can see what the conditions are or how are we going to work that?
Brian, can you speak to that?
I can. We, we started the Concon process and they're going to run it. They're going to, I think they're going to run their meeting similar to yours, except for wetlands issues. You know, they're going to focus on certain things. So we, we kind of, um, you know, whenever we do projects like this, we need to keep both boards open to, to make sure that things stay in sync. So if they have any issues that are going to cause, uh, changes in your plans, Tom, we're, we're going to have to communicate those to you. And we'll, we'll, we'll have to be a conduit between both of your, um, both of your, your board and, and their commission.
Right. That's my concern that if we make changes, how does that impact what they're doing?
Yeah, we can't have two different plans. At the end of the day, that would be a problem. Yeah.
Brian, are you starting the Concon process late?
No.
No? Okay. How long do you expect their process to take?
They have a lot to look at, obviously, but their, their, their issues are more finite than yours, right? I mean, they, you know, you look at a lot of different aspects of a project. They're looking at the wetlands impact.
And the stormwater system. I'm sure.
Yeah, in conjunction with that. Yeah. They're not looking at, you know. Economic studies and traffic and.
Yep. All right, um, I'll jump in because I, a few of mine have already been covered, but I just wanted clarification on. Um, the existing, uh, values you provided on one, a couple of the slides. There was some load, some flows, some volume. Can you just clarify how those were calculated and who calculated them, the existing?
Uh, the, so for, for the flows, we can start with the flows. Um, I calculated them. Uh, it's done based on these rain events, which are dictated by, it's called TR 55. Um, I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head, but say for instance, a two-year storm produces 3.1 inches of rainwater. Uh, we use that data in our HydroCAD software to model, uh, the existing site. And depending on how much of the site is covered in, in impervious cover, um. Or even if it's pervious, but what type of pervious is it? Grass, is it gravel? Uh, it produces these runoff numbers. And that's where we get like 10.28 cubic feet per second is what CFS stands for.
Yep. And I just, I just wondered if they, you calculated them and what they were based on it. You may have gone over it r- rather quickly. Or whether the town provided or it's based on a standard run through a model based on the current site. Um, and conditions on the site.
Yeah. And the town engineer, uh, peer reviews those numbers. So he.
Yeah.
The town engineer verifies those. So he doesn't just take, uh, Nick at his word. He, he looks at it and, and runs the numbers, uh, to make sure that they, they're correct.
Yeah, exactly. He's seen, he's reviewed all our HydroCAD, um, documents and, um. All of our watershed plans, which outline the different types of cover on the site.
Okay. No, I mean, there's been a lot of numbers discussed on this project in particular, and. There have been questions raised about where some of the numbers come from and what's the basis for some numbers. And I just. Um, you know.
That was a good question.
Be clear on this. All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, a couple of questions. Uh, Nick, I'm assuming these, uh, all the water from the roof, that's going to be directed. Directly right into the, uh, chambers? Or is it runoff? Is it?
Yes. So it's a, it, it varies. It's a, it's a somewhat complex system. The, there's portions of building three, a large portion of it goes in directly into these bio retention cells. There's one here and one here. Uh, but there are smaller sections of the building, like along the front here, where they'll discharge directly into these chambers. And the, the reason for this is really just maximizing the capacity of each of these systems. Uh, not really leaving anything else on the table. You don't want to. Leave a bunch of capacity available in this system and then overload this system, you know?
All right. So yeah, so the downspouts will go directly to a piece of pipe.
That's correct. Yep. Underground.
Okay. Um, second question. Do you see any impact, um, doing the site work on the. Pathway that's there now for the walkers and bicyclists and all that?
Uh, no. All of our work, uh, I have a, a demolition and limited work plan. It's, it's all isolated on our property. We won't need to disturb, uh, their walking path in any way.
What about the existing pipes that go there now? Are you going to take care of that or are you just going to leave it? That's.
So. Uh, the direction we've been given is to, uh, cut and cap at the property line unless, uh. Bill Renault says otherwise, and he may, he wants us to cap it at the main. Uh, if we have to cap something at the main, uh, that would require going beyond our property. Uh, because all of the utilities follow where my cursor is between the edge of our property and the lake.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg, I think that only leaves you. Do you have anything to add or all your questions have been answered?
Sure. I'll put in my week or bi-weekly every meeting plug for, it's not directly related to this, but I think, you know, when we get to that point. It needs to be talked of. Instead of just one small cafe, more retail, more cafe and a restaurant, something to more activate it and make it a public and welcoming space down there. I'll just reiterate that. Uh, you know, bring people down there and enjoy the lake at night rather than just a coffee shop or something like that. So nothing on this. No, I think everyone else beat this dead horse. So.
Nope. Lot of good, lot of good points and questions. Um, so I appreciate everyone's input there.
One more thing, Dave, sorry. Um, if this were to go through during construction, is that public? Walkway going to be available still, or is that going to be closed off?
Uh, just to be clear, this, this public walkway you're talking about running right along the lake?
Mm-hmm.
It should be unencumbered. It should just, everyone can go as they please around the lake.
In a safe manner, I assume.
Yes.
Hey, that's cool. All right. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say here, here for, uh, Greg, I agree that like there's nothing substantial there is, is appalling to me. And I see what it does. You would have to put in more parking and it would mess up that plan you just showed us, but. Still consider it because the fact that, th- there's so much more that can be done there and it's. Not only just for that property, it's a town amenity. It would be a, a benefit for your project and it'd be a benefit for the town. That's just my two cents. Thanks.
Well, they might be considering it. It just wasn't the subject for tonight's hearing, but I don't think anyway, Brian, Brian, we, you're still on mute. Um. Was there?
To be, to be clear, I wasn't expecting it, just putting in my every meeting plug.
I'm sorry, I ran with it, but it does involve some of the stuff we do talk, did talk about as to parking. And transportation and water runoff and all that stuff because you can't do it without changing the plan a little bit.
Mm-huh.
Yeah. I think we've, um, Matt, you want to just hit that quick? I think we've heard that comment, right?
Sure. I, I think it's something we're looking into actively right now. Um. And what we can do is make that a more public area and make that, you know, retail restaurant space more meaningful. So that's something we're actively looking at right now.
I didn't think the issue went away. So we, we hear you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. All right, Brian, I think that was the main topic for this evening, right? I think traffic is still a bit away. Um.
Yes. Yeah. So where we stand that the, uh, as usual, to their credit, um, VHB is doing. Asking for a lot of information, um, from our consultant. We've, we've corresponded with them back and forth. I think that we should be ready. My, my goal is depending on what Lieutenant Anson's schedule is with the TAC that we can. We can, um. Hit traffic on the 13th. Um, I cannot make the next meeting as I told you, I would not be, this would not be going forward next because I have a personal, uh, conflict. On the 22nd and you won't be here reading them, Mr. Chair. So. Uh, when you're done with this tonight, we're going to want to continue it until the first meeting in October.
Okay. Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, go ahead.
Just a quick question. It'd be great to know when that TAC meeting is. So if we, if some of the board members can make it, always helpful.
You would ask Tom that we inform you. We will.
Thank you.
Hey Dave, real quick, can I, uh, jump in?
Real quick.
Um, so Brian, during construction, I don't know if you've got this far, but will you guys be doing like? The Lowell Street exit in and out or both, both directions or are you going to, have you talked about that or thought about that? Well, Matt, if you can answer that.
Regarding the, uh, the topic, they discussed at the last TAC meeting, there was some talk about, you know, maybe doing a left turn prohibition at the Lowell Street entrance. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry.
Joe.
Yeah.
What are you talking about? Are you talking about construction traffic, Joe?
Yeah, just like, I mean, since we're on site civil, there's going to, if you have, if you're talking about raising the land off a foot, there's going to be a lot of trucks coming in and out, just, just like civil.
Right. That's all going to get talked about. We, we, we determine all that stuff down the road.
Yeah, but I think Joe's saying that it should be something that we should discuss with TAC and I think that that's a good idea.
Yeah, and the police will weigh in on it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I mean, obviously the Lowell Street's a quicker in and out, but. You know, and we've got obviously 128 is right there, but coming in, I think is an easier turn than leaving the site because you have to cross, cross one, uh, Lowell Street there. That's it.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. With that, um, we'll open up the public testimony. If anyone has a comment or question about the study we just, uh, were presented. Please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting and we'll entertain that at this time. Hmm, just scanning one last time. Not seeing any. Hands going up. So we will close it to public testimony for the evening. Um, there will be more later, I'm sure, opportunity. Um, so Brian, you said, look to continue to October 13th, at which time the hope would be traffic. If not, is there another matter that we might plan to target? Or is that really the main one we really need to get to in your estimation or other board members? Like if TAC is not ready, what else would we potentially do at that meeting too?
Yeah, I, 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 I don't know. I don't, I don't see anything, um. Drastic jumping out at me.
Yeah. The last time we talked, we said site and civil, because I was even asking, should we just push it till TAC is done? And then after TAC, Dave, you wanted to wait for TAC till we talked about. What everybody's, the elephant in the room, the size of the project. So. To me. You know, you don't, there ain't any need to keep, until we get those two questions answered. I feel like. There's no reason to keep the, you know, we're, we've just been biting off little niblets here and there.
We haven't.
In my opinion.
We haven't missed a meeting in quite a bit. We've covered a lot of ground, um, on this project. Um, so. Um, hopefully we'll, we'll be ready for, uh, TAC and if we're not, then we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay.
The traffic.
Okay. I move that we continue this till October 13th.
If I, if I, I was just going to say, if I could, Mr. Chair, before you, you closed it, you know, in potentially. You know, if we've gone to TAC, you know, we, you know, potentially, you know, we could make a traffic presentation and then, you know, at least test, you know, kind of give you the details of the traffic. And then you, you're going to obviously hear from TAC. Uh, but you know, perhaps you could hear from our consultant for a traffic presentation and then, uh, TAC if they're not ready, um, after that, but we can, we can figure that out. Seems like you'd rather wait for TAC, huh?
I think, I think so. If we can, yeah.
Okay.
I'd just like to continue to move it along. Um, yeah. Was somebody else going to add something? Go ahead.
I was going to ask, oh.
What?
No, go ahead, Amy.
I was just going to say, when can we expect to see any type of update from Concom?
I don't know what you mean by update. I mean, they have their process. Um.
Yeah.
I mean.
Just when you meet with them next, if there's anything that they've, that they are talking about or concerned about as they're working through it.
Yeah. And we'll keep you informed. We meet with them tomorrow night. You're welcome to log in.
Okay.
Um, okay. You know, or, you know, or you can also watch their meetings as you know, but, um, but as I, as I said, if there's anything. That impacts what we've discussed, presented or committed to your board. We certainly will, you know, need to and will let you know, um, because that, you know, then, then there potentially could be some dialogue between the commission and your board. Um, or even through administrative staff, like, um, you know, to talk to their agent. Um, and, um, you know, make sure we, you know, try to get things aligned. I, I, I don't, I, 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 you know, my, my, I think when you look at the benefits of the stormwater in the water quality going into the wetlands. And, um, the in, you know, the impact on the lake water. Which is a huge part of this project and a benefit that we talked about early on. That is, you know, really coming to fruition as you see these presentations. I mean, there's just absolutely no debate about that. Um, you can debate on size, traffic, whatever, but you're not going to debate on water quality because, uh, what's happening out there today. And the other offsite commitments to the benefits to the lake and the wetlands are tremendous. I, I don't know if we're really going to see a lot of. Um, issues with conservation as we go, but if we do, you know, they, they have their thing and they're experts and I'm not, then we will keep informed.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay. All right. So I think there was a motion about to be made.
I move that we continue this till October 13th.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I, oh yes. Okay. Thanks for the updates tonight and we'll see you in several weeks.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Deep breath. Moving on. We're now under new hearings. Twenty-two dash eight VCA Wakefield Animal Hospital at 60 Autobahn Road.
Me, uh, my name's Ed Baden with, uh, Baden Brothers Signs and, uh, joined with, uh, Sarah N- Norton, who's the, uh, the hospital manager, uh, for VCA Wakefield.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so we are, uh, should I? Share, share a screen or does everyone have a copy of the drawings?
We do, but it would be good for the general public and just so everyone can see them to become part of the Zoom record here. If you could share. Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. Um, oops. There's a, shh, shh, shh. Here we go. So let's see, I'll start with the, uh, the sign drawing. Let's see. Can everyone see my screen? All right?
Yeah.
Says you're sharing, but we're not seeing it. If you're in presentation mode, it, I think it can get in the way of Zoom, but. I'm not sure what you're sharing. Oh.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay. Great. So we were proposing a, uh, four foot, five inch high, uh, sign by. Okay, great, so we were proposing a four-foot, five-inch-high sign by twelve-foot, six inches wide, to be installed on the, uh, the rear elevation of sixty Autobahn Road. And, uh, the purpose of this location is to mainly advertise to the commuters on I-95. We wanted to assign in this location because of its location, uh, the building's location within the industrial district. And unless, unless you're driving down Autobahn Road, there's, unless you have a purpose to drive down it, there's really no way you would see this building, or know that it's down there.
Did we just lose you?
That way.
Something has happened to the screen share.
You're frozen. While we're getting him back, I can fill in a couple of details. You probably all know that we moved from nineteen Main Street to sixty Autobahn Road in December 2020. And as Ted said, we're a little further off the highway now, we can't be seen. There are four businesses about a hundred and fifty feet from the highway that have backlit-facing signs toward 128. We're about eight hundred feet in, excuse me. So the, the sign would only be visible in the winter, when there's no leaves on the trees. But we feel it's important for the neighborhood to know where we are, for their pet emergencies, and obviously for our business. I think he might be back, Ed.
I can fill in a little bit more, because we've, we've talked, basically, with Ed, and I had told him, basically, there's limitations as to what he can do for a sign. They can put a sign on the parking, on the parking lot side of the building, which just happened to be pointing towards 128. They came to us sometime back, and got signage facing on the front of the building at that. But it seems occupied more buildings, so of this is to all represent the entry to the back of the building, from the parking lot, basically, in, as opposed to walking all the way around the building to go in the front door, where there isn't little, little parking, basically. So the regulations here say that that sign can only be three foot high, and can be it's like fifty square feet, both of which they see. So what they're really looking for, basically, is to expand the regulation. Now, this is under the old code, not of the old way. Gail had asked me to look into this, and, and Ed and I had talked basically back and forth about this, so I let him know as to what they had to pursue. It's either that, or they had to make a little bit smaller sign. But the client in this basically wanted to sign similar to what they had on the front. So when our head comes back, I actually have not what we should chase now, but I think you have to determine whether it's acceptable to the board.
Yeah, I'll add one thing, I just got a text from Ed, his computer crashed, he's rebooting. But I, I'll add, we did change from being VCA Wakefield Animal Hospital facing the highway, just to VCA Animal Hospital, because it is eight hundred feet, as opposed to the other businesses that are a hundred and fifty feet. I think any smaller, I don't think you'd be able to read it from the highway.
Actually, the difference, the difference, as I understand it, basically, is fifty square feet's the limit. Fifty-seven is what the size of the sign is gonna be. But it's, it also, instead of being three feet high, it's four point five feet high. And that's primarily because it has two lines of text. One is the BCH of it, and the other part of it, basically, is the name. Together, basically, makes the four point five, which is the way you get it anyway, but just to let everybody know, that's how it, how it's generated. Backlighting case is allowed. There's a limit as to time, and as to when these can be on, which are the restrictions, very clearly, in relations from eleven to seven PM to seven AM, it can't be running lighting at that point. And that's about it, they, you know, they can provide, like I say, backlighting. And there's this restriction on how many lumens are being put out by this, of course. So it doesn't want to glow like somebody over, overwriting does.
Um, I just got another text, Ed's computer completely crashed, I'm now gonna send a link to his phone, so he could get back on.
Okay, thank you. So it's still same paragraph, Jim. The fifty-square foot and the three-foot are in the same paragraph, but I just want to make sure that this, the addition of this sign, in your opinion, and I don't know if Sarah can speak to this, too, but it doesn't trigger any other need for relief, like aggregate sign area on the building now for the business?
I have no, I have no idea what the total signage is, nor did I take a chance, look at it, because I don't have that information. But I, but I really kind of doubt that maybe it exceeds it, nor, it basically, they have a freestanding sign out front, and they have a building sign on the other side, basically. And, and the link signs are both occupancy signs, basically, which come under the fifty square feet. I suspect the one, the one at front is pretty much the same, as the one that they proposed at the rear, which would be the forty, about seven, maybe, maybe sixty square feet. I'm not, I don't remember when, I did look it up with Gail, basically, as to when we granted that, but it's been several years at this point.
I didn't quite catch all that, because I was texting with Ed, but I, I think you said, you had, said the sign in the back was pretty much the same as the front, and that's true. It's a little bigger, and it's missing the name Wakefield, just says VCA Animal Hospital.
What, what Dave is referencing, basically, there's a, there's a limit to the total area of signage allowed on the site. And without knowing what the other signs area are, basically, and I believe it's driven by frontage on the property, basically, to run the calculation. I have no idea about what that might be.
I don't know, I have that information somewhere, I have both both signs, measurements, but not handy.
So Jim, is it the, it depends, it says if the building on a lot is located a hundred feet or less from the edge of the right of way, or more than a hundred feet, then the the requirements are different.
Yep, yeah, there's two, there's two triggers there.
Yeah.
And I think they're probably back more than a hundred feet, so they've got the greater trigger. Or the more flexibility, shall I say?
Yeah, it's a, it's industrial, it's completely industrial zoning, and the, the only places that can see us are other businesses that are closed in the evening. We're open seven days a week, we're open till nine o'clock at night, Monday through Friday, and till six o'clock on weekends.
Understood, Sarah, no, it's just, if, if this board were to be inclined to grant a variance, we just want to make sure we would give you the, the relief that you need. If it has been so requested, we can't make findings or do permits if you only requested a variance, but if your variance really requires, you know, maybe two forms of relief, we just want, we would, we would want to at least try to get it right. So that the whole site is then legal, if you will. Because if this sign then triggers, you're, you're too over the aggregate, sign allowed on any site, right, because now you got a front, a back, and a freestanding. Potentially, you would need relief on that, and that's what I'm just trying to understand, but unless you have those calculations, or
I don't, I can tell you the business that was there prior to us, it was actually two businesses, so there used to be two signs on the front, and now there's one. I don't know if that has any impact on anything, but what it's worth.
No, it doesn't, basically, they're gone, they, they would have been grandfathered in to stay there. So, and you've got relief already, basically. Back in two thousand fifteen, I think. Was, uh, August of two thousand fifteen, that, that you got relief. No, at this site, actually.
They just moved it in two thousand twenty.
Well, this.
Yeah, we did. The original plan was for two signs on the building in front, but we went with one.
The, Jim?
Yeah.
You, you said it's fifty-seven square feet, this new sign?
Yeah.
And the other one is smaller, did, did they have a prior variance for that, or is it at the, so at the max, it could be, say, fifty?
Max.
Just trying to like back, yeah, so I'm just trying to back into what is reasonable, if we need to see, so, so if this one's fifty-seven. And then you think they're more than a hundred feet back?
I think so. Yeah.
I mean, as long as they have that fifty-three feet of frontage, you think they have fifty-three feet of frontage? And this is a conservative calculation.
This is a long, this is a long building, all right, they're only taking a portion of it. So you have, you have to take into account other signs that are on the building for other businesses.
Oh, right.
So it's not, you know, because it's property edge to property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's not so simple, you know?
Well, no, I know it's not simple, but we don't have any information, so it's certainly not simple with information.
Well, we can't, we can't tell them what they're, what variance they should chase in relationship to, without sort of a site plan that tells us the length of the property, and, and a building length, basically, so we can do the calculations. Like, so there's, there's some, you know, as far as the size of the sign, we can, we can determine that, but we can't determine whether, in fact, they need a variance on the, on the total area of signs on the building.
Building is that, our part of the building is a big L shape. The front, we've got almost, we probably have half of the building, I, I have no idea how many feet, but it's a couple hundred at least. In the back, I'm not a great measurer, but I don't know, a hundred feet, maybe, that's just off the top of my head. I don't know, obviously, we can get more information. Ed, do you have any of the dimensions?
So I have the total building dimensions, and I got that off of the property record card online. And let's see, I mean, the, the front and the rear elevation, or the total width of the building is pretty close. The, the front of the building is two thirty-four, is about three hundred and ten feet in width, and the rear of the building is two fifteen plus eighty-one, is about like two hundred and ninety-six feet in width.
It, it doesn't, it, it's driven entirely by the street frontage. So what happens?
Or the, the total bui- building?
The total, the total of allowed signage on the building is run by street frontage. And as Dave said, basically, there are two categories, depending on how far you set back from the street, you fall into one category or another. So we, we need the, we need the size of the signs that are currently there, which if I look back to two thousand fifteen, I have a record of, and both the freestanding and the, and the wall sign, and, but any other signs that are on that building on the street frontage. So I, what I, what you have to do is run calculations on all of that, on all, each sign individually, and then know what the length of the building is, and, and basically, along with the length of the property along the street edge.
So it's not so much the fifty-square foot?
Has nothing, it has, it has nothing really to do with the fifty-square feet, it has everything to do with total signage on the building. Yours and others.
Okay, so other, other tenants as well?
Yeah, yeah.
And it makes no difference if there's no, there's no other sign on the back of the building, we would be the only sign, but that's
Well, that, if there was other signs on the back of the building, then that would go into the calculation, of course. But if there isn't, the only ones that are on the building, primarily, right now, were the ones on the front. And you're gonna add, you're gonna add one more, do you, by adding one more, do you trigger this, so therefore, you need to get relief from that as well?
Right, and it states, and I will be clear. If a building on a lot is more than a hundred feet from the edge of the right of way, which we believe it is, then the total area of all signs on the exterior of the building, including freestanding signs, shall not exceed two square feet times the total street frontage on the right of way. So it really isn't the length of the building, it's the length of the right of way. So if your right of way was three hundred feet, you couldn't have more than six hundred square feet, Jim?
Yeah. That's right.
Right, so it's just how long's the, the right of way? And the total aggregate sign, all signs on that building. And we just, we don't know, because we don't have the information, whether this sign puts the whole building over that limit, and you would need a variance or some relief for that, in addition to what you requested for this one sign being too big, per the bylaw. That's all, we just don't have the information to make the determination, if you need it. If you did, it would be proper for us to grant both, potentially, or at least deliberate on both. And see if it's warranted.
Yeah. Okay.
All we know, it's already non-compliant, we don't know, without having all the, as Jim said, the measurement of all the existing signs, what they add up to, what the right of way frontage is, and kind of where you are today.
Does the monument sign count, or just what's on the building?
No, freestanding's count.
A monument's a type of freestanding, Jim, right, so.
Yeah, yeah, and it's only, it's only one-sided, don't consider both sides.
Right, the, the calculation is just for one side of the freestanding side.
Yes.
You, you don't, you don't double it, correct?
No.
Okay.
When we were talking about the right of way, I'm sorry, but I'm not very experienced in this stuff, are you talking about Autobahn Road and Teal Road?
Yes, just the Autobahn. Autobahn Road that runs the front of the building.
Teal Road runs along the side, does that count?
No, just the front.
Okay.
And it, it usually, that would be picked up on, if you've got a hold of a site plan. Uh, I'm sure there's a record somewhere that would give a length of that, either a town hall, or with it, with the owner of the building, they should have it in their records. So it's not like you have to go out and take a survey of it, you should be, there's, there's gotta be a record of the site somewhere.
Right, so I found the total building dimensions on the Wakefield GIS website, on the property records card, it would, would that be acceptable to?
No.
I'm just worried to share my screen again, for any of the computer crash, I'm sorry about that.
No, I, I, no, as, as Mr. Hatfield says, it's the length of the property.
Okay, not length of the property, not the building.
Not the building, okay.
And the aggregate square footage of all the signs on the building.
Okay.
The building size really is
And I can, I can do that survey.
Is this, there's a, on, on the site plan in the GIS, there's a, it will come up, it will give you the frontage. It'll give you the lot size.
Great. The lot, the lot size, not the building.
It'll give you the lot size.
Okay.
On your tax, on the tax card.
Yeah.
But you'll have to use some
It's online.
You'll have to use some other method to get the size of all the other signs, unless you had them in record.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be me going down there with photos and a tape measure, getting, getting all those dimensions.
Yep, and then I would just refer you, I mean, you did reference the right paragraph for what you're asking, seventy-seven E. This would be seventy-seven E two B, or two, seventy-seven E two. Depending on where you're, yeah, your, your distance to the right of way, we believe it's a hundred, but you should probably measure that, too.
Yeah.
Then, then the, the requirement is different.
I think, I think it's E one A.
That's what they asked for, E one A is the fifty and three square feet.
Yeah.
Three feet high, I'm saying, the other trigger, they're just, when they're doing their calculations, is in E two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So.
So seventy-seven E two.
Yes. So. So, again, it's just to make sure that if, if the board were so inclined to, to grant the relief on this one sign. If you needed relief in the other way, we'd be sure that you were taking care of, potentially, all the aspects involved. It wouldn't leave this other thing sort of hanging out there, unapproved.
Right, right, understood.
Yeah, and.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I, and I know that means continuing and doing a little more homework, but. We've done this before, and it just, it's, it's, it's usually time well spent to just get it right, potentially, you know, in the end, if that's where it's.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely.
Um, I'm, I'm, others can speak for themselves. I have no problem with the sign. Or potentially granting, you know, what you're, the relief you're asking. We just want to make sure if there's other aspects, we, we get it right.
You need to consider and make sure, you know, you've, yeah, covered all your bases and. Yeah, so just to find out if we need another variance or a relief for the total amount of square footage of signage on the building.
If you, if you wanna, if you wanna, if, if you wanna send me information, Ed, I'll add it, once you get it together.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I could, um. I can, I can get out to the building by, I'm just thinking about the weather tomorrow, but I can get all those measurements on Friday. Get them all typed up and send them over to you, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And where you've already applied for variance, I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sarah.
No, I was gonna ask, does that mean we continue in two weeks, or how does that work?
Potentially, if you think we can get the information together in two weeks, then yes, we would likely to continue. If you somehow needed more time, we could come back in two weeks and. You could request a continuance from there if you're not ready, but that's typically what we would do. Um, I was just gonna add, where you've already applied for a variance and maybe just need a couple of, potentially need a couple of aspects, I think we're okay. If you also needed a finding or some other form of relief entirely, you would have to file a new application.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So we, so we would find out if we need to file a new application, once I do my survey. And we figure out the, our proposed sign pushes the limit of the building. Over the total allowable square footage, does that mean that, that would trigger a new application? Or can we just tack it on with the existing application for relief for?
I think we can. I, I can double check with town council, but I think. It, it comes down to like, if you need other forms of relief. Providing proper public notice. It's not that, you know, it can't be done, it's just, it's about, because people get noticed of these applications, and so if there's.
Right.
Some other aspect that they would want to know about, it, it's giving proper notice. Where you've already asked for a variance for one paragraph, but you might need two paragraphs. In my history, I think we've done this before, and it hasn't necessarily triggered it, but I can confirm with town council.
Okay.
While you're doing your homework, I'll check with town council, and we'll see if you need to file. Then it just pushes things out a little bit, because then it's like thirty days out instead of two weeks out. Or more, depending on when that thing got filed, but. But I'll find out in the interim, while you're doing your homework.
Okay, all right.
Any other?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Before we go anywhere, other board members, any other comments, questions? On the sign and what's been requested so far? Okay, with that, we will open a public testimony. Anyone have a comment, a question about? Information for tonight in this plan, please raise your hand, and we'll entertain that at this time. Seeing no hands, we'll close it to public testimony.
I think we can handle this, Dave, without you. I move that we. Forward this to September twenty-second.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I go, yes. That's fine by me, if that's what it takes.
Thank you very much.
Sure, you'll just need, if that's what happens, and it does go to a vote, you'll just need one of the alternates to step in and just make that announcement up front, whoever is chairing, Amy.
Listen.
So they can prepare, they can prepare their vote and thoughts.
He'll, he'll be thinking of you in Aruba.
I bet.
All right, well, thank you, Ed, Sarah, for joining. I appreciate your patience and.
But sorry, I apologize about the, uh, the technical difficulties the second I shared my screen. It just like, it, my computer disagreed with me. I'll try and work through that.
I'll buy you a new one.
Bye-bye.
I'm okay with that.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, because we love signs.
So much.
About another one. New hearing, twenty-two dash nine ID Sign Group, Inc., for Shaw's supermarket at one thirty-four Water Street. Who do we have this evening? Uh, hi. There we go.
Good evening.
Name and address for the record, please?
Jamie Fisher with ID Sign Group, nine Bristol Drive, Southeastern Massachusetts.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, uh, as you've probably heard in previous hearings, do you have something you can share on screen for us, so we can visualize what you're proposing, and then you can talk to, talk through it?
Unfortunately, I don't have anything that I can share on my screen. However, I was under the, the impression that each of the board members would have their own pamphlet to review.
We do, we do. It's just for the public hearing, and this being Zoom, it's always good to share things if we can. It's just, we have paper copies, not electronics, so. Anyway.
There's an electronic copy submission.
Is there something, Gail? Let me just double check.
Thank you.
I do inform all applicants that they have to share, just FYI.
Yeah. Gail, do you recall getting any electronic version of this?
No.
Because, okay, because you usually send on, and I, I save all that stuff for the.
Yeah, no.
Okay. All right, so we'll just have to press through, so. But Jamie, why don't you just talk us through it as best you can?
Yeah, absolutely, of course. So our client has proposed that we fabricate and install an internally illuminated rondelle with an acrylic face. And, and it's illuminated with LED technology. Below the rondelle is a phrase that says "drive up and go." This is being brought into effect to promote a contactless grocery shopping experience, which is in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um, it's to help promote public safety. And again, it's just more of an approach to lighten the load and the amount of foot traffic walking in and out of the grocery store on a day-to-day basis. Um, so, as mentioned, the rondelle is a forty-eight inch diameter sign. And the overall dimension of the sign is forty-eight by fifty-two, including the copy and tagline below. It covers seventeen point four square feet in total. The dimensional letters below the rondelle are non-illuminated. And they'll be composed of an acrylic material flush mounted to the building's facade. The building's facade is a brick material. And the capsule will be self-enclosed with power supplies and LEDs. Any other further questions, thoughts, concerns?
So the lettering below the sign, explain, is that just freestanding letters?
They're individually flush-mounted acrylic letters, um, flush mounted to the building, using studs and pads.
So they, they stick off slightly?
Ever so slightly. Yep, you can see, um. On the rendering, if you look towards the center of the conceptual elevation, you see an arrow with the letter B. Um, if you look closely, you can see two little square pads. Those pads are. I believe. Three-eighths tall, and the acrylic letters are quarter of an inch.
And the, the lighting is, is to make the sign glow, or, or goes through the sign?
Yes, sir. So it's internally illuminated. The intended, intended purpose is for the sign to illuminate internally.
Jim, I can't remember Shaw's in the new sign by law or old sign by law?
Old.
Old.
So we granted, in the original granting, basically, all the signage that's down there was a part of the original granting, basically, of signage. Now, now we face, we face something a little bit different, so let me explain this for a moment. There's, there's three characteristic signs, basically, on a face of a building. One is a buil, one is a building sign. And that's more like, say, the Wakefield Building, eighteen ninety-three, or something like that. Or if the Wakefield Building was one business, it might be the business name type of thing.
Okay.
This is not the case, in this particular case. Then there's an occupancy sign, which was, take the Wakefield Building again, would be all those individual signs on, on, on the street, basically. For each business, that would be an occupancy sign. There's one other sign, which is a pedestrian sign. And I think this falls into it, except that it also doesn't comply with it. And a pedestrian sign is a sign that's at eye level. This is not at eye level. But nor is it a building sign or an occupancy sign. So the closest I can take this to be is basically a pedestrian sign. And so the relief comes, basically, in one, the definition of what this sign is. And secondly, basically, is in the square footage allowed under a pedestrian sign. So first off, under definition, a pedestrian sign needs to be at eye level. This obviously is not at eye level. Secondly, basically, a pedestrian sign is only allowed to be five square feet. This is seventeen point five. So, oh, the board has to basically. If they want to twist the definition for this particular, the sign does not fall into any other category. If this sign was five square feet, and at eye level, it would be called a pedestrian sign, but it's not. It's, it basically has gone over the top in both cases.
So, is a pedestrian sign similar to a wayfinding sign?
No, no, it, well, it, I suppose it, I suppose it could be. It just says. Um, under definition, it says, an occupancy, uh, an occupancy sign at pedestrian eye level, basically, is the definition.
Okay.
So, so as you're strolling by, basically, you, at eye level, on a sidewalk, something like that, you'd see a sign, so.
Okay.
So it's, it's really, it, it's, it's, it's an odd situation, basically, that you're asking for. Doesn't mean we can't grant something here, but, um, those are the triggers that you're facing.
Sure, so, you know, it's, it's more of an accessory sign, if anything.
Yeah, unfortunately, they, they call accessory signs, basically, a whole, they define accessory signs as building signs, occupancy signs, pedestrian signs, and the like, so. I, I think, I think we need to determine this is sort of a pedestrian sign, but at an elevation, basically, is higher than. Because it is meant to basically forbid, to, to direct pedestrians, basically, to an operation, but it's just not at the right, at right elevation.
Yes, sir. Agreed. And I would argue simply that because pedestrians are not expected to leave their vehicle, it does help to bring the eye and elevate the eye up towards the main sign. You look towards the main sign, off to the left, you see this drive-up-and-go service. So, you know, in essence, a pedestrian sign is great, and it serves a function if the individual is leaving their car, leaving their vehicle, and walking into the front entrance of the, of the building. But that kind of conflicts with the essence of this program. This program is in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So as a result, it, it wouldn't necessarily behoove the consumer to actually exit their vehicle, go out, check the pedestrian sign, then go back to their car. Do you, do you know what I'm saying?
But it says, it's, it strictly says eye level. That's, you know, six to five feet, all right? So, so you, you can, you can warp it all you want, it's still not, you can't warp it enough, all right?
Right.
And unless you got helicopters feet, basically, and you can get up at that elevation, but be that as it may, I, I don't see this as a big deal. I don't know how the rest of the board feels it, but, you know, I think we can work our way through this.
The sign is just showing that it's a service that's being offered, that's not showing you this is where you go, correct?
No, but it is located central to the parking stalls.
Okay, but it's not directly.
It's not directly, no. The parking stalls are within the parking lot, whereas this is on the building's facade.
And are the parking stalls gonna be signed as well?
I believe they are, but that's beyond our purview. That's not within our scope of work.
They already are, already used them.
Okay, okay.
And I think they're one row over. They're over by the charging station, actually.
I think so, yeah. I, I do have a rendering, a rendering on that, just to confirm it, if you'd like.
Well, I, I think in the original determination, if we go back and read it, it probably indicates that any new signs basically come before this board in a matter of what, anyway.
And where it is, too, right?
Yeah.
So they probably should have come to us with the parking space signs as well. But let's not go there.
That's good. Go to sleep for a while, will you?
I'm ready.
I don't know, I just. I struggle with what, what this sign serves, because. I assume, I know it's advertised inside the building a lot. And is, what is this serving? If people drive by and see it, then they're gonna go online and place an online order? Are they more inclined, they don't see the signs already in the building, or already have the app, or? I just. I struggle with what it act, what value it adds and the aesthetic on the front of the building, personally, but.
Yeah, because I don't even know how you see it from Water Street, where it dips down. You can barely see the Shaw sign. You're not gonna see this little red dog.
But doesn't, doesn't this count kind of like produce meat? You know, kind of all the other stuff that's there?
The services you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, like as you're walking in, you'd see it, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna catch somebody driving by, like, oh, that's great, let me go check it out. It's somebody that's already walking into the building.
Yeah, but we also don't, oh, Shaw sells meat, let me go there.
Also advertised already by the parking signs, so.
Yeah.
And over the loudspeaker when you're in there, yeah.
Well, and in, in, you're in the lot, you walk by the parking signs, you see them. How many signs are we gonna?
Yeah, I mean, I would almost feel better if it was down at that same level with all the black word, you know, all the black ones.
Yeah.
Just over that next panel. And it's at least consistent. It, maybe it has a graphic, but it's advertising another aspect to the business besides cheese and deli and whatever else, right?
Right. I mean, to me, it just is out of place. Jim?
Hey, you know, I'm leaving it to you guys. I'm only interpreting it for you.
Is this the Shaw standard, or is this?
I, I was just gonna, gonna take it there, yeah. So if I may, this is kind of a, a, a brand standard. They've rolled this program out at every single location, right across the boards, and I believe it's throughout the entire Albertson's platform of companies. Um, with that said, we do have this project going at a hundred seventy-plus locations. And almost all of them, you all find that rondelle located to the right or the left of the main entrance sign.
And not centered?
Not centered, unless the building permits for it, obstructing variables and, you know, extenuating conditions. But given the opportunity, that they would like to see it off to the right or left. If, if you all recall, there used to be an OSCO sign off to the right-hand side of Shaw's. That's kind of more or less just a brand standard. They like to bring the eye up.
Just for everybody's information, I just took my, and looked on Google Earth. And you're going along, if you're going along Water Street, you definitely can see this. So it becomes a little button on the building, basically. It says, "we provide this service."
I'd have to see it to believe it.
Which part?
But you can see it and read it from driving thirty miles an hour down Water Street.
Oh, you're speeding now, okay.
Thirty? That's the posted limit.
You sure about that?
Yeah. All right, rails, sorry.
That was you.
I know, I'm calling myself out.
But there are also the, the two intersections, the two traffic light intersections, so cars do come to a brief stop. Maybe giving them some time to pause and look over, um, at the wall sign.
You're not proposing to put it on the Water Street side as well, right?
No, only the parking lot side.
I guess from my perspective, I just don't, I don't have a problem with it. I don't see any adverse impact. I really don't. Yeah, again, Tom, I the sign itself, okay. Again, maybe at eye level, maybe to a different location. It just, to me, it just seems out of place. I hear what being stated in terms of drawing the eye up or a company standard, but, you know, other places have standards that we've sort of customized for a town or what we feel is more appropriate for the area, you know, so.
Dave, I'm with you. Not to sound crass, but I don't really care about company standard. Oh, it's company standard. Okay, here's variance. I don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Understood.
No, we've done it with other businesses with colors and placement of signs and.
So just kind of reviewing the bylaws and the, the standard and the definition of the pedestrian sign. It, it does say at eye level, and I would just like to remind the board that this is an internally illuminated sign with some pretty thin acrylic letters. Now, if you were to put it on eye, eye level, it's significantly closer to the ground. So now you're kind of introducing, you know, this, the sign that projects out. Now granted, it only projects a couple of inches, but how close to the ground do we put it? Is it now an obstruction? Uh, is it a possible head knocker? And, you know, could it sustain the, the brunt of any damage in the future?
Because it's changed because it's at eye level.
I'm sorry.
Or does the sign change? Because then it is at eye level. It doesn't have to be. This package gets put at eye level.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I'm just playing it forward so that I can I just throw that out there for that idea out there.
So I was saying, maybe on the same level where the words are not necessarily down next to the front door where people could hit it or bang it or hit their head on it, but just closer to eye level, maybe a tall person eye level, but down where those words are. So there's a pattern sort of across that band of the building perhaps. So and those letters project, right? So I don't know if they project the same distance. They're not, they're three dimensional, right?
They are three dimensional. They're twelve inches tall. Yep.
And they project probably a couple inches, right? So I just, my personal opinion, it's, it, I, I think I'd rather see it down there if, if it was going to happen. Just, that's just my opinion. I, you know, board members.
Dave, I agree with you. I think between the cheese shop and delicatessen, right, they would be, you know, lined up with cheese shop, cheese shop and delicatessen right between the, on that column there.
I was thinking the opposite side. See if you go next to Shop the World and then there's the space where you would put another like cheese shop that's empty. That's where the parking spaces are too.
Is it? I thought the parking space is on the left side.
I thought they were right by the, because that's where the door is.
Charging station is, right.
I think that's right where the I think so. No, 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 not where the pickup is, where the, uh, where the Tesla thing is.
The charging station, yeah.
You could, you could put it right inside one of those brick panels right there, under Shaw's, under the shop, the food, shop the world.
Then it would be a pedestrian sign.
I mean, I don't know if, if we were gonna.
Oh, Jamie, can you hold that up again? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Of course. So, um, just to kind of give you guys a reference point, uh, the, the Shaw's letter set is right here. And then the parking stalls are right there. So letter set stalls.
I put it on a panel. Um, basically, under, under the H, right centered in the panel. The H of Shaw's, it would, it'd be at pedestrian height, so we don't have to go down that road. It would just be, it just would be the size, would be the only request here, basically, on this. And as a point of interest, um, thirty miles an hour is what's allowed on that road, Amy.
Thank you.
Photo that I do have of that letter set is right here. So when we turn to the panel, are you discussing this section here? Or this section just on the sidewalk?
In the panel, in that recess panel, yes.
Right here. Okay. Okay, very good. Was there any way to move forward on the impression and contingency that we would be installing the sign there? That way we don't have to resubmit drawings and re-present again at a later date? Is there any opportunity to just move forward now with that contingency in writing?
Potentially, I, I still we, we've got to see if we're getting consensus on that placement and
Sure.
sign itself and that public testimony.
Because as mentioned, our client has rolled this out across the board and they're certainly willing to compromise. Um, even if that requires us, you know, potentially removing smaller signs such as shop the world or delicatessen, or even a combination of the two, still a little bit, to get a little bit. So, um, you know, we're, we're looking to essentially introduce, um, seventeen point four square feet of image area. So if it might help, maybe I could suggest that we remove at least, or if not more than seventeen point four square feet of other image area to sustain that balance.
No.
No, okay.
I mean, my opinion is no.
And I, I would definitely be glad. I don't, maybe shop the, if, if it works, it can't just be, you know, we set the sign off to the side because it's now seventeen point four feet that we removed, and this is just where it was good for us. But I mean, if they're willing to remove some, I'm all for removing you know, lighted signs and swapping out signs. I don't know why we wouldn't be in favor of that, more in favor of adding more.
Well, it's, 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 it's already a character that's part of the building at this point and, and what we originally approved. And it would be a little odd sitting down there in, in my way of thinking, um, to, to do that. When in fact, you've got a, a perfect place that's, that's framed in the pa- in the brick panel to put it in there. And it's at pedestrian elevation. So, you know, we don't have to tie ourselves in a knot over the definition of, of, of a pedestrian sign. We just, we just grant them basically relief from the overall size of this thing.
But this here is an, uh, even more recent elevation of the storefront. Um, so you can see the future proposed location. And essentially, we'd be looking to install it either in this panel or in this panel, based on the board's recommendation. I don't know if this helps clarify anything for anyone. Just to give a better, a, a better visual indicator.
What is that? What is the lettering there? That's not a circular sign. That's just a lettering.
No, this was simply just a photo that was taken while on site to conduct the initial survey. It just, it's just by happens chance that I even have this photo. It was, it was actually used to determine, this pattern was used to determine the existing square footage of signs on site. So you can see, it's just part of a larger photo. That was just simply him and drawn in.
I'm, I'm assuming the images that you submitted with the, with this signage up above on the upper panel, basically, is appropriately sized, basically, in character to the rest of the signs.
Correct. Yep, that's to an approximate scale. It's a virtual elevation based on an approximate scale. You can actually see that's the exact same picture. Like my truck is in the bottom right corner. It's, it's the same truck as out there. It's, it's the exact same photo. Um, except, you know, our virtual elevation, our conceptual rendering is actually in fact a scale. Those are eight inch face bricks.
Well, if this was the go ahead, I, I'd put it in the brick panel on a, under H, center in the panel.
So why there, Jim? Just because try to get it at a pedestrian, true pedestrian level?
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I don't know that necessarily has to be lit. I mean, it's a dialogue, you know?
Well, just again, I'm I got my own picture here. And the row where those signs are, where the, where the actual drive up parking spots are are right across from that empty panel on the right. Where it says shop food of the world and then looks like there's an empty one. I don't know if there was no, something there at one time like OSCO and it went away.
There was. Correct.
But there's all these, that whole band has these black words and there's an empty one right in front of the parking spot.
You're talking about where I said, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So
Yep.
If we're gonna do anything, I, I would be more inclined to put it there because it continues that band of these are the services we have, and now we've got this new one. And it has a little color, it has a little splash. Called, you know, it draws attention to the eye. You see it from the street, apparently, according to Jim, would be a little lower. But if you can see Shaw's, you'd probably see this, especially as you got closer, and you'd certainly see it walking to the front entrance.
I'm not, I'm not gonna die on this mound, quite frankly. Wherever you guys think it ought to go, go.
I just, the only thing I had was more, was more the, the location being so up high, out of place than.
Yeah.
And I just, there's, there's sort of a pattern there, you know? I'm not trying to pick a random spot either. There's a pattern. And there's an empty spot, as far as I can tell. I, I haven't looked today, just to refresh my memory, but I go there a lot. And I'm just looking at a recent picture and I think it's the case.
Did Chip fall asleep off his chair?
No.
He's tying his shoes.
All right. Does anyone else have any comments, questions at this time? Because I think we have at least one hand up. Both can consider other thoughts. All right, so we'll.
I, I think, Dave, the only question is, I think, I, I don't know what but I would rather see a new drawing. I mean, it's, it's not like we're trying to help out a small business here. I mean, what's two weeks? I'd rather see a new drawing. Because he, like you said, there's a pattern, but also that pattern is black. So we're gonna put all of a sudden the, uh, splash of color in the pattern. It's pretty, changing it up quite a bit. That's just my thoughts.
Okay.
Is the red the logo color? Or is that able to be changed?
That's the brand standard.
And for the record, for department head, no objections. It's not within Concon's purview. No comments from engineering. Okay. Just for the record. All right. We'll open up the public testimony, um, and we'll see where we go from there. So first hand up I see is Bronwyn Delavolby.
Hi, uh, Bronwyn Delavolby, eight Cyrus Street. Uh, for those who don't know, I live directly across the street from Shaw's. Um, I very much appreciate, um, your thoughts on moving the sign downward. Um, but I have to say, the light pollution emanating from this site has, is, is very bad. It's, it's very bad. It's very intrusive to the entire, entire neighborhood. Um, adding more light, I'm not going to be happy with at all. I, I liked the someone's suggestion that why does it have to be lit? Um, I don't see the need for the sign myself personally, uh, but really, please, no more light, no more light. It, it's just too much as it is. Um, and it's just, the whole area just glows all night long, whether the store is open or closed. It's pretty bad. So I just would like you to keep that in mind, please, um, with this. And also, um, thank you for suggesting, uh, that we see a new mockup because um, I appreciate you holding up the, the pictures and the whatnot, because that did give me a little bit of a better idea. Um, what you guys were talking about, but if, if we could have a, a digital image so that we can take a, a better, a better look, see at it, um, that would be, that would be great. So yeah, uh, you know, another sign, it doesn't get me very excited. If it's lit, then it gets me excited. So um, that's all I wanted to, to say on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? As many people left. Seeing no other hands are called at the public testimony, so. So Jamie, I know you're representing, you're with the sign company, you're right?
Yes, sir.
Um, is there someone you'd have to check with corporate here if we want to move it and say no lights?
Correct.
That would be acceptable to them? Then you could update a drawing and maybe come back in a couple of weeks and and let them know. That's, that's totally doable?
That's totally doable, certainly acceptable.
With an electronic version you could share on your screen?
You got it.
And an updated plan that would be sent the Friday before the meeting, uh, so that all the board members would have a chance to review it. Um, that's what we usually ask for. So that would be by, uh, whatever that is, the eleventh? Eighteen, what?
Nineteen.
The eighteenth?
Okay.
Uh, seventeen. So by the seventeenth, that's, that's what we would hope to get, um, if that's, um, if that's, uh, suffices for you, um. Anything else, board members? Sounds like that's where we have it with the continuance and see an updated plan and see where that goes.
I move that we continue this to the last date discussed.
So now, second, second.
Um, so now, does that, does it do anything for us if I were to bring in multiple, uh, iterations of this Rondell mocked up in the two separate locations that we've discussed? Would you like if I could do that, just so that we can compare and contrast? Or should I just definitively take a stab at it and and, and run the risk of having it in the wrong spot and continuing this process?
I'd say you could, Dave, up to you, but I'd say as many options as possible since tons were discussed tonight.
Okay, it's been done before. You bring in a couple of options, maybe after talking to your client.
And as early as possible.
Right.
Yep.
And electronically, so you can share.
Noted. Okay.
Okay. And then within those options, we'll obviously just supply, uh, you know, renderings of the illumination and details on the illumination. If we were to mix that at a future date, it's not necessarily something that we have to resupply a drawing on, correct? I mean, it's just very obvious. It's no longer going to have LED illumination.
Well, no. Decision, it should have exactly what you're going to build.
Okay, so.
Inspector has to refer to a plan or somebody down later in the future refers back to a decision. They see no lights, but the plan says there would be lights.
Okay.
It creates a discrepancy. So, so ultimately, what we approve should be with a final plan of actually what will be built.
Okay.
You're, you're here with the board that would prefer no lights. If you bring in a version that has no lights and that's the one that gets approved, then there's no further change. Um, but that's up to you.
Gotcha. So it sounds like four options. One on the band off to the right of Shop the World with illumination, one without illumination. One below that band, under the H in the recess with illumination, one without illumination. At that point, we can, we can, I guess I'll just give them all individual whip numbers and we can move to a motion on whip one, two, three, four, five, for instance.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Individually identifiable with some, some number we'd approved plan.
Okay.
A, B, C.
Yeah.
Be referenced in a decision, potentially.
Option A, B, C, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Dave, would you prefer to have this happen when you're here?
I am fine either way.
Come on.
Nope. Fine. I'm sure they'd like to visit. I mean, Jamie, do you think you can do it in two weeks? Or do you think you?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We'll have these renderings to you tomorrow.
Uh, well, Amy, sorry. I don't know what I.
I'm just gonna continue it.
I know.
Have you left an Amy? Have you left?
Um, no, it's just, I, I don't know if you heard earlier. I won't be at the next meeting and Amy's gonna be chairing, so she's just got more, more in her plate. Yeah.
Whatever's most convenient with the board.
Yeah. No, let's, let's plan for two weeks. If something comes up. Yeah, no, let's, let's plan for two weeks. If something comes up or it gets continued based on further discussion or new testimony. Then so be it, but at least I think we should continue for the next one. Alright. With that.
We continue this to September twenty second.
Second.
Any discussion? Chip, how do you vote?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
And I go, yes, okay. Thanks, Amy. And it sounds like we'll talk to you in a couple of weeks.
Wonderful. Thanks, David. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to other matters. Nineteen dash seventy-one, eleven eighty-eight Main Street. Solomon Realty cross, discuss minor modifications.
Evening board. Um, my name is Paul Vier. Um, with Contemporary Contract Incorporated. I'm the general contractor on site for this project. Let me try to share the screen here. I know we had a difficult time trying to move this along. Can you see that? Board?
Don't see a screen yet. Does anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I've got the, the whole page five in front of me here. Right, see. Setting me off here. I'm very familiar with the Mac security system, yeah? Can anybody see anything there yet? As I try to figure this out here, uh, basically would be homeowner now that they see the project. Framed out. They basically have. Proposed, and I know we talked last meeting in reference to adding transients onto certain windows. And eliminating some windows out of the original plan.
Right, and you were coming back with an updated plan. It clearly articulated the changes.
Correct, and I actually, uh, actually submitted it. To the board last Friday, all highlighted in red on what was eliminated, what wasn't. Just a quick question on a side note, I'm hitting the shared screen here and I'm. Not getting, I mean, I have both the, the plans that I submitted with the. Marked up in red. But for some reason, it's not showing up on, can anybody? Recommend anything here? I. I build houses. I don't do the technology thing, sorry.
Now, we've hit this occasionally, to be fair. Different people have hit this, board members, if you recall, some people try to share and I've tried to share occasionally. And. It doesn't give you the option of sharing each individual app or window that you have opened. I don't know why Zoom does this. I don't know if it's some setting. Or something's in the way. I see the ability right now to share everything. I don't know why it happens for certain people at certain times.
I mean, I'm running a Mac, so I don't know if that's something different than a PDF or, I mean, I'm on a PDF thing, but. But basically, the, the window configuration. Is being, the windows themselves, the size of the windows are not changing. What, the only thing we're adding is a ten inch transients on top. For the homeowner has actually ten foot ceilings in the house. So they just wanna maximize the light coming into the, um, the, uh, dwelling. They did add on the rear of the house an additional window, uh, I believe on the electronic package. But. On the first floor, they have actually eliminated one of the second windows that was, uh, down there. And then on the.
Alright, so I'm, I've got the files, I've got the files you sent us.
Okay.
One is a. It's a PDF.
It's on page five. I'm sorry, it's on page five, if everyone.
No, I've got a, I've got a list with numbered lists of each elevation and what you're proposing to change. In, in a, in a document. Everyone should have that, board members. Uh, it was called Solomon zoning dot PDF. That's just a Word document or a document with a list of the changes.
Right, that was a narrative.
Plan, so which updated plan could we potentially open on our own? Has these red markups on page five?
Is it this one?
Yeah, that's it. That's, that's what I have.
Yeah, do you want, do you want me to share, Dave? He's, we did get something. I don't know if it's quite an updated plan. But it does have red markings and say, you know, remove this, remove that.
Okay, the ones I got are still dated March and they say three eighteen and four twenty-seven.
Yeah, so Dave, just, I, I think. I'm not in the bit, house building business, but after looking at them, I think it ju, it's not an updated plan. It just says. We're removing this window, we're adding this or remove it, but that window is still there.
We asked him to provide a list and he did that.
Yeah. But there's still no updated plans. The plan still has a window on it that's not being removed.
Correct.
Okay, good. I wasn't going crazy. I thought I was.
No, no, you, you're right. In a sense that I basically just highlighted it in red, uh, eliminating this window. And I made the notation on each individual window or door of what. We were proposing doing with these, um, with the windows or doors.
In which plan?
Uh, the one that's dated three eighteen, twenty twenty-one.
Not the one that's dated later, four twenty-seven?
No, no.
The first email that we got, it says one of two, and then it's page five.
Okay, I see.
I, I actually, sorry.
A bunch of yellow boxes. Yeah, okay.
Sorry, Dave. I sent over two emails this week, uh, this last week, uh. To submit, one of them was the red highlighted section with all the different. Narratives, we'll say, and then I also submitted a PDF letter with the individual numbered narratives. Listed on the, a list.
Okay, does somebody have a copy they could share for the benefit of everyone? Cause I don't. I don't see.
Yeah, give me a second. You're talking, you have the plan, right?
The actual plan with these red markups. I'm opening that copy. I don't see red markers. I don't know if it's.
I got it.
You're on page five, Dave. It's just one that has the red.
It's small.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the one right there. Thank you very much, Greg.
Still, like it says.
Right, but just highlights eliminate this one.
Yeah, yeah, eliminate a whatever that means.
Well, eliminates a, i- it basically, there was a thirty-four by forty-two window there, so we're eliminating and just adding a single twenty-six by forty-two. So we're minimizing that window. So that's on, on the rear elevation. Um, the door basically was moved over about three feet to add. Or propose adding this twenty-six by forty-two with the ten inch transient. This one. Correct. And then to the right on the second floor, the last window, correct? That, the only thing, the window stays the same, the main window. We just add a ten inch transient on top of that. And then if we go down to the bottom first floor. The window on the left. We're proposing eliminating it. And then the window on the right-hand side, we're keeping a twenty-six by forty-two, but originally there was a. Thirty-four by forty-two. Window there. Um, and then if we go up to the left elevation. We'll start at the top. There's, we're adding a three. Twenty-six by forty-two. Window with ten inch transients on top of it. The customer now, or the homeowner, it's all me. Actually asked if we could eliminate this window completely, the one on the second floor, the twenty-six by. Thirty-two with a ten inch transient completely gone. On the original set of plans that was submitted to the, uh, the board, there was a window down here on the first floor. I can actually pull it up and let you know. There was a. Proposed a twenty-six by forty-two on the first floor. That has been completely eliminated. And then if we go to the right-hand side. Which is, um. The. The windows. Were always proposed as a twenty-six by forty-two. The only. Proposal that we're, uh, asking for, the only modification we're asking for is adding on the second floor, the two. Uh, windows on the second floor, we're adding a ten inch transients on each one of them. We, we are also requesting that we move the. Left-hand side, both left-hand side windows on the first and second floor. Closer to the right-hand side. Only because on the second floor, it basically, the window would be useless because it would be. Close to like seven feet above the staircase platform, so it would really be a useless window that you couldn't even operate. And on the first floor, that twenty-six by forty-two on that first floor that we're moving over to the right-hand side also. Uh, closer to the right-hand side, sorry. Was originally proposed being inside of a closet and there's really no use for it inside of a closet where there, it's actually at the bottom. Of the, um, staircase. So those are the only, uh, minor modifications that we're requesting.
Yes, I don't really even understand still, if, am I the only one? Like this says eliminate. Twenty-six by forty-two, propose three, but they're already there.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, Greg. Originally on the first zoning. Uh, approved set of plans, there's only a single twenty-six by forty-two window here. Now, we're proposing putting a three twenty-six by forty-two. With the ten inch transients on top. So rather, rather than a single window, we're having three combined together.
Right, so Greg and board members. The, the actual plan that we should all have a copy of that says Solomon for permit. Four dot twenty-seven dot twenty-one, which would have a later date than this one. Actually shows the single window there. And all the old things.
Yeah.
For some reason. The applicant went off and updated a plan that had an older date that had. The actual stuff that they want and made notations on it.
But not all the actual stuff, because this has a window that's leaving, that's going. So some of the stuff is on this plan, but some of the stuff is not. That's my confusion.
New drawings.
And then this just says door moved over, like, huh, where, it, it's moving from there or it's moving, I, I don't.
No, just to clarify something, uh, this, this project was. Handed to me. I, I know at the beginning when I submitted for a permit. They gave me a set of plans. And it went back and forth, uh, with, uh, the, the building department. And there was a lot of different plans and the architect was changing the dates because. They were asking for the original plans dated, I believe it was two thousand and nineteen. When it was originally submitted to the board. Then all of a sudden. All these other multiple plans came about and. These plans were actually submitted for me to bid on them. So with the transients and these windows were submitted to me for bidding. So basically, as was stated earlier in one of the previous hearings. You know, it gets confusing when, uh, homeowner. Is dealing with multiple different plans and they're handing them to me saying, this is what we want done. And now all of a sudden it comes up that, okay, you really want these windows, but it gets kicked back to the board. Only because there's a big confusion on the homeowner saying, well, the, the architect gave me. Three different sets of plans and never got the ones that I really wanted approved by the board.
Okay, we appreciate that. And you're trying to. Get a final set of what the homeowner wants. Approved.
Correct.
And that's what you're showing, that's what Greg is showing, what you sent us. With these notations on it.
Correct.
Okay. Well, as you can hear, it's. It maybe is a little clearer having the notations, but still, as Greg said. Some of the changes are shown. Let's see, the door moved over. I'm looking at the old one. It was further to the right. But there also was no window there. Right, so that top and the, on the left-hand side, that window wasn't there and the door was over there. So now that's, now they've shown the door being moved over with this new window in, in, in kinda where the door was. So. I think this does. Other than the one that says eliminate this window.
Because there was a single window there, Dave.
Right, a bigger window and now.
We're back to a single window.
Now that.
Now there's two smaller, instead of one bigger one, correct?
Yeah.
So there's other plan that has a later date. It just, again, Paul, it gets confusing for us. And we're eventually potentially voting on something. We're gonna need a final plan that's clean and shows. All the fi, and then if, maybe this is it, if it really does represent.
Yeah, cause that was confusing, Dave, even what you said right there, cause it says. This says eliminate a window, but this also says eliminate a window. So I thought this was referring to that one window and then, oh, this one's coming up. The earlier print plan that had one window and this one's coming up too. I didn't know what the hell is coming.
I, I think you should have had the old plan and said eliminate and then the new plan with, you know.
Or even, I think what we normally see is a new plan and the changes are just clouded.
Right, but it sounds like, it sounds like we don't have the architect involved anymore. So that he, the builder. Is.
That is correct.
Trying to do the best he can. Paul's just trying to do the best he can to give us the information. I happen to think that this is a pretty clear set. That this, this. You add this along with his PDF. That states everything. I can follow it and think it's pretty clear.
Yeah, I should have prefaced everything I said with, you know, as Paul said, he's in the home building business.
Yeah, he's trying his best. He's trying his best and, and. You know.
Far from that.
And, and I think we've probably eliminated the architect based on the fact that. They're giving plans for permits that don't, aren't right and. I'd probably eliminate that architect too. So. Paul bid what we asked him to do.
In, in defense of Peter, basically, is he had indicated to me sometime back. This, there have been changes being made. And he's asked me whether in fact it could go, should go to the board. I says, absolutely. So who knows what the relationship is between Peter and client? Maybe they don't wanna pay him anymore, who knows? But at this point, I would agree with you. If we wanna settle this, I can understand this. So can you. And it's pretty easy to look back on the old drawing compared with this.
And I think the building department would understand what is supposed to be being built. And all we're trying to determine are these minor modifications. Right?
Yes. I also need to ask, because we've been down this road before and it. Kinda came back on us. These plans. Are. Titled Peter Sandor's Phoenix Architects. The notations in red were made by whom, Paul?
They were made by myself, Paul Vier, with Contemporary Contract. He has the builder and approved by the homeowner. They were made by myself, Paul VR, with contemporary contract, he has the builder and approved by the homeowner.
See where I'm going, board members. Now, this isn't a stamp plan, so Paul, it gets a little dicey here, we've been down this road before. When someone takes an architect's plans and then. Turns it into something and modifies it. Now, this isn't stamped, which. Can make a difference cuz now you're taking something that, that he's put his name on and stamp on. And you're now modifying it and it, to, to anyone who's not part of this conversation would think he did this, right? When in fact he didn't, um and he may have a problem with that, as we've seen in the past, um.
Can I, i- if you don't mind, I, I had a um, a site visit with uh Peter himself. While the homeowner was on vacation. Well, the ho- the homeowner asked me, in, in reference to this, this um. You know, these, these windows and all this. And the, the question that, or Peter actually basically said, he goes, well, didn't you notice that those plans were only for bid? I'm like, well, how can I get an accurate bid if this is not an accurate drawing? Okay, or you never even got it approved by the zoning? And he's like, well, it is what it is, it's just for a bidding. And I was like, well, I mean, that's just a waste of my time, even bidding on this project. Cuz these were the actual plans that were submitted to me for bidding um on this project. And I understand where Dave you're coming from, absolutely correct, um. I don't think these plans are uh stamped, or I'm sorry, they do have his name on it, so I agree that they are stamped. In a sense, um. But I, what I didn't understand from Peter is why they would never approved for, through zoning. For building if they were out for bidding. And that's where um the homeowner, whatever issue he's got with the architect, that's neither. My privy or anything, I'm just trying to move this project along, get it done. In trying to do the uh appropriate thing in proposing uh what, what the homeowner basically wants. And I have submitted these to him for approval.
So here's a case where normally on a larger project, I would end up reviewing the approved zoning drawings. With the construction set, once the permit. Once they come in for permit, permit, but because of the smallness of this project, we don't, we end up. Don't waste the time to do that, assuming that someone's following the regulations basically and. Following it by what was approved.
Jim, as an architect though, how do you feel about? What Dave, the issue Dave brought up, not formally stamped plans, but.
Well, that's, you know, it should be, it should be, I mean, Peter's. Peter's logo is on this thing, that doesn't make it legal, I mean, because he has to decide it, alright? So I don't know what services he's provided, basically, to do this, if he in fact drew this thing up. So, you know, and, and it, and if, if there was any question, it should have come from, to some degree, from the building department. Wait a minute, this doesn't look like what was approved with zoning. And someone from here, probably myself, had called in and said, when you look at this and see whether it complies. And the first thing I would say would be no, cuz it doesn't, it doesn't even compare with what we approved.
I think I'd feel more comfortable if we had a new set of drawings that are. Either stamped or. Peter's not part of it anymore than. I don't know what else we would have, but. That's just my opinion.
Well, Peter, I mean, the, the, the building set doesn't have to be done by Peter, it can be done by somebody else, but at least fall, has to follow the zoning.
Right.
You know, so if it doesn't follow zoning, then, then it's, it's not a legitimate um documentation to approve.
This becomes a building set, right, upon a line of rod?
Um, what, what's been presented basically, assumingly, is a, is a, is a, is a contract set or at least a building permit set. With framing and everything else basically on it. So, but it shouldn't have, if, if Peter did it, then he should basically stamp it.
But he didn't do it.
He didn't stamp it.
But he didn't do it cuz there's, there's modifications to it, so, I mean.
Well, but it's marked over, so we don't know what the history of this whole process is.
Right, and that's the problem.
And I, I, I think I'm having a conversation with Peter tomorrow.
Right, he might have done all the drawings and, and then Paul just put the red text on it to say, these are the changes.
Right, and that's fine, but I think we just need some type of verification of that.
And if Paul is fine with your annotation on his drawing. And, you know, I don't know that he removes the bid set not for construction notes, or if that still applies. Um, and he's willing to stamp it and say, yeah, I'll stand behind this plan, I think we'd be comfortable, right, board? Just some confirmation that this is.
What's filed for permit at this point?
I, I believe it's from Peter, they're, they're Peter's plans that we gave the permit out.
Yeah, but is it, is, is that the one that we're showing now?
That's a later date.
No, so these would have to be stapled, they were approved by staple to the permit. Set that we gave out to show changes.
Just to clarify, um, when, as I stated before, I don't wanna take too much longer, it's ten thirty. Um, when we submitted for a permit. I submitted, I believe it was these plans and it, the building department kicked it backs and gave me the letter from. The board in reference to approving a set that was set back in two thousand and nineteen. The date that was on these plans are as stated on there is three to twenty-twenty-one, beginning of this year. Um, we kicked it back to Peter, Peter came back and actually gave me. Uh, a, another set of plans that was dated April uh twenty-twenty-one. And I actually had a conversation with one of his architects in reference to. Not to telling them how to do their job or any of that stuff, but if there were any modifications done to any sets of plans. That on the revisions down at the bottom there, proposed floor plans and you got uh, you know, number of revisions. It should have been revised based on those dates and put in there. All the, Peter's office, and I'm not saying it was Peter's, Peter's office. All they kept doing was that original date down where, right now it's reading three eighteen twenty-twenty-one. They just kept changing that date to a whole different date to try to get the building perm, or the building department to give us a permit. Um, which then got kicked back to the original set of plans. Dated, I believe it was April two thousand and nineteen. Um, so now, the, the homeowner thought that. This here wa- would be just a small mo- uh minor modification. In reference to adding transients or even just adding the windows indoors as proposed on these. The twenty-twenty-one set of plans. Did, did. That clarify anything?
It, it's been a mess.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
The whole thing, I even told Paul way back when we gave the permit out, we've never seen anything like this. We finally got a letter certified by Peter, that these were the approved plans by the board, the, so we gave the permit out. That the board approved, so, but.
Couple years ago?
Uh, no, probably less than six months ago, I think, Paul, wasn't it?
Yes, when I originally filed for the permit.
What, what plans that we approved, this is the first time we've seen these changes.
No, not these plans tonight, not the modification, but when they originally came in for the building permit. The plans were so messed up and the dates were all messed, we kept kicking them back, we kept. Giving them back to them, three, four, five, six times.
Correct.
So finally, we had Peter certify through a letter and give us plans. That matched what the board approved back in two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah.
So now what's presented tonight are these little changes, so when they come in. Then we either make them pull another little building permit or we'll put these new plans with those plans to show the changes.
The decision was, the decision, in the decision set, it was a June two thousand and nineteen set of drawings that Peter did and were approved.
Correct.
Which is what that four twenty-seven twenty-one says, it says six twenty-six nineteen, rev four twenty-seven twenty-one. It shows the old stuff. And now this one that has a newer date for some, uh older date, three eighteen. Um, has the new changes with these annotations. So, yeah, Paul, to your point, I don't know why the dates are what they are, they, if, if there were revisions beyond four twenty-seven. You would think it would have been revved off of this version with the changes revved through whatever, July, whatever the date was that they were revved. And then you came, ultimately came here, the dates, be that as it may. You've articulated on the plan what the changes are, you've given us a document that lists them. Board members, are you comfortable moving forward with this as a minor mod as is, or do you feel you need some other certification from Peter? That that. Some of the certification from Peter, that what we're approving is in fact. Correct, and. He's, he's gonna stand behind it, cuz his name's on it. But Paul's made changes to it.
But I mean, that's, I feel more comfortable getting something, no.
A- and just to add to Dave's, the, the underlying plan was never approved cuz it's a different date.
Right.
Yep, it's, it's very sloppily done. Um, I think something should come from Peter. As much as I agree with Chip, it, it's, you know, understandable to us, but I think we need to sort of. Tap somebody on the wrist and say, hey, this is not right.
So Jim, can I, can I?
Course you can.
All right, can you go down with this to the bill, can we? Can you straighten it out tomorrow with Peter and the building department and this? Note and figure out what plans, what dates, so that we don't put the building department in place and that Peter's okay? And we can. I'd feel comfortable saying these are minor modifications if you can straighten it all out tomorrow.
Yep.
I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but.
Well, we'll see.
I think it's a mess, but. If, if the building department's okay with this notification, if Peter's okay attaching this notification to the original plans. That were. Set, and Gail and the building department's okay and understand what's getting built. Paul, you've already got this thing framed out, right?
That is correct.
So you're well into this?
I'm well into it, yeah.
And I noticed you've pulled a lot of your hair out due to it, so.
I think it's being up at ten thirty, that's why.
Yeah, trust me, we're all here too. I, I, I don't know of any other way other than somebody actually getting down there, seeing what was submitted, talking to Pete, you know. Straightening it all out.
I think we need to hear from Peter.
And, and that's why we normally do all of this with a lawyer.
Yeah.
And if anyone objects in that process, then they have to come back here, whether it be Peter, the building.
Yeah, if Peter says, I'm not comfortable with you guys doing this, if the building department says they need more information. If anybody, if we can't straighten it out. It's only, my motion is only based on that Jim can figure it all out tomorrow. And gets everybody's okay. Hmm, then everybody can move forward, I, other people may not be comfortable with that, but I'm comfortable with that.
So you're, you're proposing to actually make the motion and find the minor mods?
Well, I.
With a big finding, with a big condition that they straightened it all out? I don't, I'm not.
No, I mean, I, what, what has been shown to me tonight, I understand, and I feel are minor modifications. What's confusing to me is what everybody else is adding to it, the dates are wrong. We don't know what plan was submitted, all of that, what, what we asked Paul to do, he did, and I understand it.
But did we, did everyone get the sense last time that Peter was out of the loop and that Paul was gonna go update Peter's plans?
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't.
I didn't think he was gonna update the plans, I thought he was gonna give us a list of what he actually was going to do. We're eliminating this window, adding this one, and we're like, put together a list of exactly what you're gonna do, and he did that.
We always need a final plan, right? And we think we have it, but it's. I don't wanna restate, we're, we're, we're just going in circles.
So Dave, your chairman, figure out what you wanna do, and I'll back you on whatever you wanna do.
We can have Peter stamp these drawings.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Yeah, I was gonna say, if he's willing to, and if he's, and if he's not, then there's problems, so why would we approve it?
Right.
Correct. That's why I don't wanna vote tonight, and.
Right, and when you play, I mean, I know it's not stamped, but this is still somebody's livelihood, and this has nothing to do with Paul in any way, shape or form, but this is Peter's livelihood. And it, like you said, we've dealt with this in the past, and I just wanna make sure that, that everybody's on board, that's supposed to be on board.
If there's a problem, we get an updated plan. And, and we say this is the one that we're gonna make a, a finding upon, with the list that Paul provided.
Right. The list, yeah, everything is fine, it's, it's just. That it's modified after the fact.
There was injected a new plan that's not. Properly done.
Right.
Okay, so I'm, I'm recommending we continue for two weeks. And this, what has been recommended takes place between now and then. Paul, Jim, whatever you can do to help facilitate, we appreciate it. And hopefully we can put this to bed in two weeks, in the meantime. I guess work continues, Paul, I don't, is there been a season to sist until this gets straightened out?
No, there hasn't.
Okay.
Not yet.
We're just trying to take care of the paperwork for what's.
Exactly, exactly, sorry Amy, I'll see you in two weeks.
All right, let's, let's put, let's, let's continue this for two weeks and square it away between now and then, hopefully. Put it to bed.
All right, thank you very much, Dave.
All right, motion please.
I move that we continue this to the September twenty-second hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Chip, how do you feel about that motion you made?
I love that, well.
You're improving.
One more thing for Amy, one more message for Amy to clear up, that you're gonna go to Aruba for Dave, but I'm gonna okay.
Well, the place is for me going to.
Yeah, Amy, do you approve the motion?
Yes.
How about Jim?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yeah.
I approve that motion too.
Punchy.
Okay.
You know, we're taking more time on these little things at the end than we did for the whole first show.
I know.
It's always the way.
I had a feeling one or two of these might go this way, so that's part of the reason I didn't suggest taking them up front as we did last time. All right, twenty-one dash sixteen, another, other matter, one oh one Cedar Street. Micah Canestaro, Canestaro, sorry, um getting late, alternative materials. Michael, you here, solo, Brian has.
Yep.
Left the coop.
I'm here, yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm solo, unfortunately Brian had a conflict. We sort of had uh some confusion around the schedule, but um, I have a, I do have an electronic copy of the. Alternative materials list, I can share a screen if you'd like to start there.
Yes, please.
Mike, have you talked to your neighbor yet?
Yeah, yeah, actually, uh Dave Ferrick is on the, on the, on the phone with us this evening.
That's the neighbor to your left? That was involved with all of this?
Yes.
Yep, he's there, on screen. Well, that's not the one. All right, can you see this?
Yeah.
You can't see it quite yet?
No.
Okay, I think now you should.
Yep, we do.
All right, so I have a, I have a few slides here, I'll just start with this one, um. So I have in the, in the blue font, a new entrance on the front side of the building for what's gonna be unit three. And this was, this is a proposed modification, so two doors side by side on Cedar Street, which is pretty common along that street. And what we're doing is moving from this rendering, this door right here in the side entrance. And this driveway side over here is where Mr. Ferrick lives. Driveway side over here is where Mr. Faric lives. So we're proposing moving this door. To the front of the building. So side by side.
Okay.
Does that eliminate a porch or an entrance on that side as well?
That's right.
How does it, how does it work in plan?
I could pull up my plans, uh, if you'd like, I can.
Do you have a left side elevation? Where the doors being eliminated?
It's right here, this, can you see my?
You have a plan. You just heard seventeen minutes of. Plans and confusion. Do we have a plan? Not a rendering, a plan.
Um, I mean, I I don't, I guess I don't understand the difference between the rendering and the plan. This is, these are, this is what my approved rendering uh was from for my plan.
Yeah, but you.
So I'm removing this door.
But you're 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 moving a door from somewhere. And if you had a plan, we'd understand. Where it came from and where it's going, because I think what you're saying is the the right hand door goes up the stairway, the left hand door. Goes into. Uh, into the other unit on the first floor. And the plans I got are. Really weak and hard to read.
So are you talking about the configurations of the? Of the inside?
He does have a plan, we got it, I can share it.
Yeah, no, I do, I can see that too, I. I guess I didn't understand the question.
And I was looking at the, I don't, do we have something that? In plan is gonna show us the modifications?
Yes.
Yeah, there were two attachments sent to us, right? There was the PowerPoint that you're showing now. And a PDF.
Yeah, I can pull.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought someone else was pulling it up, I can pull it up. Sorry, I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, no, if you can, I don't know if you can. Share your screen and just switch between windows as opposed to sharing individual. Apps.
Yeah, I'm trying to do it now.
You can show us the change, if there's a question kind of how it represents on the plan, we can switch to it.
Can you see the plans now?
Not yet.
Are you in screenshot mode? You might have to come out of that. I think that.
Yeah, let me try to come out.
Cause I think we can still see it on your slides, if you're not in this mode. Okay, now we see the plans.
All right. Okay. So here's the, here's the plans. Here's the two entrances coming in the front. This one is for unit. Three. This one goes upstairs to unit four. The current stairs. Would have came in. Right here. But they've been eliminated.
And there was a dent there as well, right? Or an entrance way or something?
No, yeah, yeah, it was an entrance.
An entrance stairway. Off the driveway.
Right.
And there were gonna be an area for trash bins there.
Um, there was gonna be an area for trash bins. Yes.
Next to that doorway, if I remember.
Stairways, I think. Yeah, I I actually don't recall that off off offhand.
Yeah, I remember there was discussion about by the porch versus out back or both or. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I think there was gonna be an enclosure or something.
Yeah, you're right, and actually on on alternative materials, um, I talk about that, uh, that. Space for the trash.
Okay, so where that entrance was, it's now what, a living room? Is that, it's a little blurry on the screen?
Yeah, yeah, it's a living room.
So you just reconfigure.
That area now get landscaped, and if so, what's the landscaping?
The, um. The landscaping plan won't change much, all that will do is we'll expect extend what was the planner boxes across the. So that cross the structure, so, um. It's ba- before it was basically a big plan box along the building, the stairs, and then it was just the driveway. Just give me an extension of that a few more feet.
Dave, if I can, it's late. And I'm gonna try to be as kind as we I possibly can be. We need to have. Plans that show. What's being eliminated? What's being added, just the same conversation we just had. Ultimately. You know, to hear, oh, landscaping is just gonna be extended. That's not what we approve, we need to approve something. So it needs to be a plan. That we have to approve to determine that it's a minor modification. In my opinion.
Okay, so. With respect to the changing of the entrance, so that Eddie is representing. He had a, he had a, um. A rendering and this is the plan, so. I can make note of any of these. Other things here. Let's see how far, how how big that list becomes, let's see where we need to go.
Have an elevation showing what this now is gonna look like without the door.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Yeah, we have it.
Okay.
We have all new plans and all new elevations.
Who's the architect on on this? And are all these plans dated?
Yeah, they're they're dated, these ones were, um. Done by John, um, I don't know, forgetting his last name.
Have you switched architects?
I have, yeah. But they're they're stamped.
Let me tell you right now, the plan, the first floor plan is entirely changed. The front of the building, basically, the windows have changed to to meet the new plan, basically. So there there is, there's quite a bit of change be- between what we approved and what's here be- before us.
All right, well, let's let the applicant continue, um, their presentation and we can judge. So. This is the elevation showing the removal of that door, it's up front. He showed us the interior layout changes resulting from that. Again, we don't really care what goes on inside, it's more about the outside and what we approved. All right, what's your next change? If you can go back again, switching back or just want to stick with this plan? But you had good representation in another file, if you can go back to it.
Okay, you should be able to see a PowerPoint again.
Yep.
So. This decorative window here. Um, sliding glass door and and hand railing. We're just gonna keep it as, we we wanna keep it as is, so this is how it currently looks. So we we basically don't want to have this hand railing up here. For a few different reasons. Um, or the entrance here. So this is how it is currently. So the modification would be just to kind of keep it the way it is designed.
So what are the reasons you're eliminating that nice detail?
Um, well. Liability for one, this is gonna be, you know, rented out and there's a sliding glass door there, that's probably the number one reason, I don't want. To have people, um, hanging out on top of the porch that are renters and potential. Liability.
Okay.
So I tried to make this. Easy on the eyes, I don't know if that's successful. Probably not, um, the first modification is awning concept over the rear. Stairwell, it doesn't fit. Actually, it was, looked nice on the rendering here, but we just can't fit it. So I just mentioned that here, we'll have to remove the awning over the. The back stairs. Um, and then I mentioned removing the driveway side entrance. To move to the front of the cedar, that's right here. Moving that, which we already talked about in the last slide. Um. Moving. This window right here. So just because of the new layout. It doesn't line up quite quite right on the wall. And then, and then finally, um, the architectural. Metal railing around here. We're gonna remove because. Um, again, for liability reasons, we don't want. Anyone to think that there's anything but a roof. We've also eliminated the door, which I'll show later on in the presentation. So. The tenants cannot access this roof unless they were to. Come out the window or something, but. I know that was a concern of Mr. Faric in the past as well, so. You know, we don't wanna, I don't want to make it look too inviting. So here I mentioned removing the door to the roof. As you can see, it was here on the original elevations. Adding a bay window. To unit two. For not for just greater natural light and it adds a little bit of interior area, because it acts as a bench. Remove rear deck. So right here, we have. Falls to remove this stairwell. Um. And in order to do so, we added a larger windows, this means a second egress.
What happens to the door at that elevation?
This door?
Yeah. Is it now below grade? At the left? What's what's at the left here?
Oh, yes.
Looks like it's below grade.
Yeah, yeah, so actually, there is a stairwell behind these set of stairs. This deck sort of comes out a little bit on the right hand side. You walk down the steps currently, so when you remove this deck here, that's what you'll see, there'll be. Uh, actually, just a stairwell, it's already existing. Going down, and that'll be the entrance to the lower unit. Here.
Does that window change too? Looks like the bay window.
I'm sorry?
Looks like the bay window changes too. You add one below.
Yeah, that, uh. Correct, yeah, so that was, uh. Adding of a bay window here, just to add more space for this, for this unit and more natural light than what was before, just this one window on the entire. Side of the structure, so removing this deck, I wanted to kind of add a little more light to the unit.
Yeah, but what about the one above it? Looks like it's different, right?
Um, no, they, they'll be the same, actually.
No, from like what you have approved, though.
Oh, uh.
Different style. Right?
So this is, yeah, so these are, these are just both two different types of like panoramic windows, one is a, um. A bow and then there's a bay, and what I want is actually, um. What we want is a a bay. Uh, I talked to the architect and, um. I was gonna have him revise them on the plans, he he thought because it's the same amount of space structurally, it shouldn't be a problem. Um, but, uh, but yeah, these are definitely, these are both gonna be bay windows. Add bay window. Here.
Okay, yeah, you're just gonna match it above it.
Yeah, exactly. Backside of the property, I think will look more sleek like this.
I remember being.
As well the dri- uh. Yeah, go ahead.
I remember it being pretty important where those dumpsters went, both you and us, where are they gonna go? With. Remember how they were on the side, next to the doorway and the porch? Where they go now?
They weren't gonna move, uh, we had no plan to move the, the, I don't have, uh. Where Brian had located that on the plans, but that's, it's not changing from where they were approved from. It's not gonna block any windows or anything.
But then we.
I, yeah, yeah, I believe, I believe, if I'm going off memory, I believe it was right here and then. Where the stairwell ended and where there's gonna be just straight. Um.
That's just a window.
You know, like a. On the other side? What's just the window now?
You took out that stair on the side with the porch, right? That's where the the dumpsters were, right?
No, no, it's right here.
No, trash, the trash area was where that, as as pointed out, the trash area was near that. Doorway stairway that went out, it's, I'm looking at the landscape plan now.
Yeah.
On the other, yeah, we had two spots, we had two spots in the property for the trash, we didn't have it all in one place. But I'm not proposing changing the location of the trash bins.
So should they're gonna be stacked up in? In front of the window?
They're gonna be next to the window. I mean, I'm I'm not changing the location, I don't know, I'm not trying to change anything that was already approved.
Well, you're changing several things that were already approved, and that's why you're here, but. The question is.
No, but that wasn't, yeah, but that wasn't one that I was.
Yeah, no, no, but.
You know.
But you're up to about eight or ten changes here. Um. And I know we spent a lot of time on the outside of this building. Cause that's what it was all about.
So let's let him keep going, what else, what other changes are there?
Adding a, a larger window here for the bedroom, that just means a second egress, and then. A window here just for a little more natural light in this unit.
What about the bigger window on the first floor?
Took a couple of changes, though.
Yeah, the si- the sizes are. Sizes are different, I think that was just because when we actually reconfigured the inside where the walls of the bedrooms were gonna be in the bathroom, it didn't quite. Look as. But, um. I can. You know. I don't think I'm gonna. Get very far tonight, so maybe I just make a note to have that changed. These aren't. You know. Should I continue on or?
Yeah, well, let's see what else you got.
So. Just alternative, uh, material. Um, going a PVC board and batten from the Hardy board and batten. I know, it's 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 radical.
Is it also a different color? Cause that looks like it went from beige to white.
These are all, the, everything's white, these are sniffed pictures from, um. The computers, so that's where I'm getting my images from, but it's meant to look the exact same as the, the the color of the approved plans.
So why are we changing materials?
See, a few reasons, I I understand there is a supply issue with the board and batten. Um, and then also just looking around the neighborhood, it it seemed like. That was sort of the. Theme of the neighborhood and. Um, then looking at the cost, there's a, there's a number of reasons.
Okay.
And then also for the siding, going to vinyl versus the Hardy board. And then same size shingle. And then same size shingles, just um also vinyl. And then just an alternative um alternative for, for no stone on the property.
Where was that gonna be? Refresh my memory.
It was, it was gonna be um, when you walked through the main entrance, up cedar, where we now have two doors side by side. It was gonna be where that second door is, sort of right there. Um, and we still might, we're just, just looking at everything and I didn't want to have to come back later if we decide we don't want stone on the front of the property. That's it, that's it, I believe. Oh, no, actually, sorry, there's the trash bins we're talking about. Um, so just in a modification, I, I had approved a, what was a wood uh storage bin and um just wanna get something more practical. That won't rot and fade and so forth. And that's it.
Okay.
Mr. Jim, if I can start?
Okay, Chip.
Um, I don't think that this is minor modifications by any means. I feel that what's been presented tonight, not necessarily architecturally, but all the siding, all the reduction in niceties, all the reduction in quality of product makes this a very, very different project. Um, so I'm not in favor of having this be a minor modification. If this came through to us with vinyl siding and Rubbermaid containers for the trash and um, this, this project has been cheapened considerably with what was been approved tonight. Plus, I have no idea what's happening on site and or landscaping by removing doors, changing doors where locations are staying. So I think there's still a lot of missing information. Um, but from the product changes, I'm not in favor of calling this a minor modification. And if it comes back to us as a new application, I probably wouldn't be in favor of doing it with the cheapened products. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, I don't feel like this is minor mod.
No, and I don't, I don't know that we can even say it's, we feel like it, like by the definition.
Hmm, it's not, yeah.
It's not. So, you know, with all respect.
And that's, that's.
It just, it just isn't, right? By any stretch that in one of these or two of these, maybe moving away, you just heard us talk about moving a couple of windows and doors. You know, potential, right? This has turned out to be fifteen or twenty things and changing materials, which is much more significant. Um, because it goes to the whole look of the building and the quality of the structure and everything, as Chip said, so. Um, I, I mean, others wanna weigh in or they share similar sentiments or?
Yeah, you lost me once you went to the vinyl siding. I mean, that's just getting the railings, the vinyl siding, that's just that, like Chip said, cheap and everything else.
I, this, this, there was a lot of time spent on how this was looked from the outside and what Cedar Street is and how it matches up with the other. This is just, it was, it was approved because it was a nice project and it's not a nice project anymore in my eyes.
If, if, if you might remember, we tracked, the whole object was to keep this building pretty much as it was. So when we stacked, there are some windows on the um street side, on the Albion Street side, which are are changed, are three-unit windows that are tr- turned to two or small, single windows, basically, that uh are not, are not as part of the original character of the building. We, we're changing the original character and I think the whole thing, when we talked about this originally was, the whole thing was, this is gonna be just, it's gonna change on the inside, but not change on the outside. And at the same time, we're gonna take care of the issues basically on the outside with materials, new materials and like. So this is a, this is a stretch beyond where we were, where we approved.
Yeah, it's a completely different building.
Yep.
This is going so slow. I, I mean, from the street side. I, I really, I don't, I mean, we have a neighbor that I share property line with on the phone, you know, he had a chance to look at it. Um, Dan, would you mind giving your thoughts on, on what we see here?
Well, through the chair, um, I can choose to open it up to public testimony once we're done.
Oh, oh, I apologize. I don't know.
Um, yeah, this isn't an open conversation, um, not yet. Um, but uh, and we will welcome his input, certainly. Um, it's not, not to say that we won't, but, you know. I don't know, any other board members?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm, that's where I am. This isn't by definition a minor mod. What are we, what are we still doing?
Yeah, I mean, once you completely change it, I, I, I understand what Mike is saying with, it looks the same, but it looks the same as in where doors and windows are. Once we change the entire set of materials on the whole building, it's not, it's, it doesn't, it's not the same.
Correct.
We do have, we do have.
And we also don't approve alternatives. Like you said, oh, we might want to do stone still, but we might not want to and we don't have to come back. We approve something concrete. We don't approve and you could say, oh, we approved this earlier, so we're gonna do stone now. You need to know exactly what you're doing and that's what gets approved and that's what gets built.
This is my first, uh, this is my first go at this, guys.
I know, but you were here for all the hearings, right? You were here for all the.
I, I sure was. I sure was. I was more of a ta- attacking partner. And I was uh, figuring it out as I go. I, I apologize, but I, I do have to mention on, on regarding the siding, we found some really high-grade vinyl that we couldn't tell the difference between, between them and the hardy board. So um, you know, uh, it's, I think from a look standpoint, we are not sparing expenses to, to add bay windows and to um, you know, strip it down the way we're doing and, and reheat and replumb. And I mean, we're, we're putting a French drain in the back, on the, in the back of the property. We, we're putting support beams on this thing so we could add another level if we wanted to. So I take sort of offense to saying that it's not the, the project that it was before, because in a lot of ways, it's much better. So um, sorry, I'm, I'm getting a little, I'm getting a little upset because I'm, I'm feeling like a punching bag here. And um, I'm putting a lot of work into this thing and it's gonna make Cedar Street, that whole, it's gonna take up the whole neighborhood. That's, that's all I have to say.
It's gonna take up the whole, you're gonna add another floor now? Is that something you just said?
No.
No, no, I'm saying I'm, structurally, it's gonna be very, very sound. That was my point.
Well. Appreciate your sentiment and, and we're, we're not gonna beat up on you anymore. Um, we're just saying that you've applied for minor modifications. When we got this, it did seem like a lot of changes. We, we gave you the opportunity to explain them all tonight. Um, but taken in their entirety, as you heard, they just, we cannot consider these minor modifications. We just cannot. They do not fit that definition. Um, so if you wanna proceed with these changes, you will have to refile for an application to modify the original special permit. It's not a minor mod, it's a formal modification. So it's a new application to modify it, a new set of plans, new public hearing. If you wanna proceed with all of these changes, if you wanna reconsider and maybe make fewer changes than what was already approved, and you wanna come back to us with an updated set of modifications that is, could considerably be more mod, you know, minor. Um, maybe we could have that conversation, but it would have to be, as you heard, you know, maybe moving a window or door. Um, but not materials, um, not like this, but uh I think those are your options. Make fewer changes and maybe we could make that finding or reapply. Um, and we, we take it under a new public hearing, but as you heard, at least one person would struggle even with that. Um, again, taken, taken in its entirety, but that, be that as it may, that's potentially a future hearing that hasn't even happened yet. Um, with that, board members, I will give Mr. Farick, who's been very um uh vocal and participated uh a lot in all the original hearings and opportunity at least offer his thoughts um on what he's heard tonight, and then we'll proceed from there. So, Mr. Farick, would you like to chime in with anything? David? Hmm, doesn't look like you're on mute, David. Are you just now? Okay, I don't know if we lost Dave's audio. I'm trying to find it.
There we go. It should be, you should be able to hear me now, correct?
Yes.
Yep. I apologize. Sometimes the microphones cut out. I don't know why. Um, so I, you, you give, you know, um, thank you again for, for the time and uh, you know, gi- given what you had stated, Mr. Chair, what you just recently stated, Mr. Chair, that and it seems that this is still gonna be in flux, um, you know, I'm gonna withhold any sort of comments or anything like that. At this point, it doesn't seem like it would be appropriate, um, depending upon the path that, you know, Mi- Michael would like to take. Then, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll examine it at that point then too. And, you know, I just feel like my comments wouldn't be helpful or, or hurtful at this point. It'd just be kind of whispers in the wind, I guess. So thank you.
Fair enough. Just wanted to give you the opportunity.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, board members.
So um, I was just gonna ask, before I go um back to figure out what I'm gonna do next, um, is there anything in particular that like, what would you say is the, the biggest issue here? Cause um, you know, there's, we added windows for bathrooms and we did, we there's, there's reasons where everything, why everything's placed where it is. Um, so I really, I really hate to um, you know, take out windows or I don't know if it's like the steel beams, but um it's a little bit of guidance to be helpful, so I'm not, you know, going in the dark a little bit. Or I can take a stab at it.
Well, again, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's hard to say and it's, I don't know how far we can go with it. And telling you, you know, where that line would be, um, it's, it's sort of like, you know, when you see it kind of thing, but, you know.
Dave, I'm happy to say I'm, I'm, I'm less concerned about moving doors. Obviously, within confines of reality of a minor modification than the wholesale change in materials and stuff. The materials, to me, change the project, like definitively, all, but.
Right, moving a window here and there is not a, it's, that is a minor mod. It's not a huge deal. Things change around. But when you put the pictures side by side and you see all the changes and it looks like two completely different projects, that's when I think it, it goes over that line.
Yeah, and even, again, removing those front and rear sort of balcony porch areas potentially. I know we spent time on it and I guess I, I, we probably did talk about potential liability, but again, I.
So don't. So don't put a door out to it, but still put the railing there. I mean, I think the railing adds something to the project, in my opinion.
Right.
I agree.
You know, so don't put the sliding door out, but put a window there, but leave the railing on. I mean, there's, there's lots of things that can happen. And, and if the vinyl product is equally as good and not hardy blank, then show us it and give us real samples, not pictures.
Yeah, you could bring them to the building, cause we, we don't have the meeting room where you can just walk in with them and we can hand them around. But you could bring them to the building department. Other people have done it. And when we know they're there, either, you know, Gail will let us know, we can come down and see the materials before a future meeting, if that's the way you wanna go. Or you go back to the original materials, but if you do wanna show us something different, actual, you know, I, I would suggest old and new, if you still got the old samples, um, so we can compare, but uh, that's an option.
Um, okay.
I'd also like to see a site plan that shows or, you know, where all these staircases have gone and what's in their place and what landscaping is gonna be done in their place and you know, but there's a lot of changes.
Okay, I get it, I get it. Um, I need, I need to clean it up and uh and then um, I'll, we'll try to get some comparable materials and I've got, I've got enough notes to, I've got a lot to work on, I see. And I appreciate everyone's time. I know I'm the last person you're speaking with on the evening. Everyone's tired, so um I, I'll get to work and I'll try to put something more organized together for everybody.
Okay, and again, just keep in mind, if, if you're gonna come back with this many changes, it's gotta be a new application. You, just so long as you're clear on that, that, that you can't just come back with materials and, and, and clean up the pictures a little bit. You know, it's, unless you reduce the volume of changes significantly, this has gotta be a new application. Just so you, you got that clearly understood. Um, and if there's any question, you know, you can reach out.
Um, okay.
All right. All right, well, thank you.
All right, everybody.
Yeah, we'll talk.
Thank you.
Alrighty, have a good night.
All right, thanks, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Any clerical board comments tonight?
No, I just lost you guys. Hold on. I'll leave that.
You're there, okay.
Oh, she must have clerk comments then.
Nope. I got nothing.
Okay. Uh, then item six, approval of minutes of August eighteen.
I moved that we approved the minutes of August eighteen?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Chip?
Aye.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Boom.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I go, yes. Well done, Gail. All twenty-one pages.
It's grueling.
Um, okay, board members. Um, so just before we adjourn, um, so Amy, we can touch base, I, I assume.
I'm out of town.
Um, so unless somebody else really wants it, it sounds like you're, you're the uh, you're the one.
The guy.
Yeah, you're the chair. Um, so if anything, you know, there, I think there's some new stuff. You know, that, that'll take care of itself. If any of these continues, were to come to a vote, obviously, you gotta make sure you got the, the right number of voting members, you know, that people caught up with affidavits. That's why I did the foundry one. Sounds like we're covered if it comes to the vote. Um, just select upfront to the five are going to be, who's gonna step in in my place. Um, we've, we've got a couple of alternates that can do that. Um, but other than that, you know, you've been down the road and we can certainly catch up ahead of time if you have questions or afterwards, of course.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I'm sorry. COVID.
Yeah, it looks.
We're scheduled, I'm not, I'm not canceling again.
Wait till you see the recommendations I give you now. Remember, I know all the places.
I know you won't steer us wrong. All right. Anything else, board members? I think.
Yes, I moved that we adjourned.
Second.
Any discussion?
Have a great trip.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Fun. Have fun, I'll talk to you.